Good afternoon and welcome to this Monmouthshire County Council Full Council Meeting on this Thursday, the 12th of December in the Council Chamber in County Hall, Asc. It is my pleasure to welcome my fellow councillors, officers and staff along with viewers watching online and I'd also like to extend a warm welcome to members of the public who are attending in the chamber today. Welcome. I'd like to remind councillors online that they must keep their cameras on at all times and to use the hand up facility that will appear in the chat if they would like to speak. I'd also like to remind everyone to turn their mobile devices to silent. Depending on how we proceed, my intention is to have a courtesy break every one and a half to two hours, but if you need to just raise your hand. Thank you. Before we proceed with business, I would like to take this opportunity to express our heartfelt gratitude to all the staff who have responded magnificently in three local emergencies we've had flood, fire and storm since we last met. It has been a vital source of help and reassurance to our communities and of pride in you all to me. I think councillor John, would you like to add anything briefly please?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Afternoon everyone. Just very briefly, I wanted to put on record my thanks to all the council officers and other partners, emergency services for all the work they've been doing in those three crises you just mentioned. There were officers of those emergency services and of our authority who went above and beyond. I was out in my own ward the other day and I was talking to officers who were dealing with trees that had come down and some of them were out at 3am the previous night and then they were back out on the streets at 9am the following morning. We feel really proud of the contribution that they've made, particularly in Abergavenny following the fire. Our thanks go to all the residents and shopkeepers for that sense of community there. I was in Abergavenny the following day and talking to Paul Cable, one of the newsagent there who'd lost everything, but the way that that business community had rallied round was just incredible and I think it says something about the fabric of the community in which we live that people support each other in times of crisis and in the last few weeks in those three examples you've mentioned, I think we've really seen that and we should all be proud and do what we can to encourage and facilitate that because as an authority, we can't do everything, but we can empower, we can facilitate, we can enable and the more we can do to help build those stronger communities, the better. So, thank you Chair, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Councillor Harris?
Yes Chair, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity in thanking officers, senior staff and I take councillor John's comments, endorse them fully, but I would also like to just pay tribute to all the volunteers which we have in Monmouthshire who actually are the bread and butter of this county. They go above and beyond what they should do and they are just priceless. I'll give you an example, people clearing trees off roads because we just couldn't cope with it to a point, but roads have to be open, they had to get to work or they had to carry out hospital appointments. They just go above and beyond with our staff also. But I'd just like to mention as well, and I think it's very important today, that we don't forget the people of Valencia and the surrounding areas as well. We know how devastating floods can be, the water is nothing we can do anything with, it's so dangerous and I'd just like to pay that my respects and this council respects the people of Spain and Valencia and the outer regions there who actually lost their lives and the devastation. We all saw it out there on the television. It was unbelievable what water and damage can do to communities and to towns and villages and when you lose your life or your family has lost members, it just brings it to home really of what climate change and the weather climate, what we have out there can cause to certain communities within the world even. So, thank you Chair for allowing us that and I do think it's important that we just have a moment's silence for the people who have lost their lives out in Spain there. They are part of us, they're part of our culture and they're part of the Europe that we still represent. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I'll hold that and just allow other leaders to speak. Councillor Chandler?
Yeah, thank you Chair. And I would too, on behalf of the Green and Independent Group, would like to pay tribute to council staff for the work they did in the emergencies. The staff on the ground, you know, dealing with the floods, helping to, working with Blue Light Services to evacuate residents from my village of Scenfritz in my ward, but also in other places. But also the social care and modern life staff who created the refuge centres in the leisure centre where people who evacuated from my village and other places were temporarily looked after until they were able to find other accommodation. I don't think the public realise how much work goes on behind the scenes to support people in emergencies and I think the work of the council has been exemplary in this regard and certainly talking to residents in my ward who've suffered a lot from the floods, whether it's Scenfritz or Rockfield or with the trees down, they've got nothing but good things to say about the council and how it's dealt with the disaster at the time and the recovery afterwards. So, on behalf of them, on behalf of my group, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Brocklesby?
Thank you Chair. I think my fellow leaders have said all really that needs to be said, but behalf on the council, there are three groups that need an expression of thanks and also an expression of understanding of compassion. As everyone said, our officers went above and beyond. They went above and beyond for the fire, then the following weekend they turned out for Storm Burt, two weeks later they turned out for Storm Dara. Between all that, they carried on with the day jobs and they continue carrying on the day jobs. And we shouldn't forget the emotional toll that that takes on people to have to deal with a humanitarian disaster which thankfully, nobody died and nobody was injured, but people did have to be evacuated. And people when they face disasters in that way are panicked, they're also extraordinarily resilient, but their emotions are at a high level. And our staff showed the compassion and the kindness, the dignity and respect to every single member that they met within our communities, but also with all the other services that they worked with because it was an astonishing display of what happens when people choose to work together for the common good. And we saw that within our communities as well and we expect that in Monmouthshire, don't we? We expect our communities to pull together and they have time and time again. And time and time again, our communities seek out ways in which they can support the people who are most vulnerable, who need most support at that moment when disaster or crisis attacks. And the third group that I'd like to commend and also give thanks to are our communities and town councils and our civic groups, whether they be a group for the community fridge, whether they be a local church group, whether they be a sports group, because they all turned out to help their communities to ensure that those who were with them, families, children, were known, supported and seen if they needed help. And again, we expect that in Monmouthshire, don't we? We expect our civic groups to go above and beyond. Later council, I'll be bringing a report before you that's working with bereaved families in tragedies. It fills me with enormous pride that in Monmouthshire, much that we're asked to commit to in that charter, we already do, day in, day out. And for that, I think we should all give thanks. And I do recognise what you're saying councillor Howard, that sadly because of climate change, we are not alone in these disasters which come with relentless inevitability now. And we are connected across Europe, across the United Kingdom, across the world. And the way in which we are dealing with it, our resilience as well as some of our suffering is being replicated across the world and it's something of which we have a commonality. And I do think it's something worth pausing and reflecting on. Thank you council.
Thank you councillor Peter.
Thank you Chair. Peter Davis, acting chief executive. So, yeah, similar comments really and just to echo and both endorse, I think, all comments by group leaders. Very, very fitting. I think from my perspective, I get the privilege through these emergency responses to take very much a helicopter view. I'm able to look over everything that goes on and I think points made. There's an awful amount, a lot of planning and preparation that goes into this. It doesn't just happen by magic. So, you know, as much as I try and avoid individual shout outs, you know, Ian Hardman and the emergency planning team, you know, they make sure those arrangements are well in place so that when they are stood up, everything falls into place as it has done and really well. I think those who have obviously stepped up in order to oversee and coordinate things really need to be commended. I think to councillor Chandler's point, I mean, this is a whole organisation effort so you don't single any one part of the organisation out. They have all stood up and responded tirelessly and three times over. There's a fair amount of fatigue in the system, I think, and I think they will have certainly be deserving of some rest and relaxation over the Christmas period. I think the points made in terms of both multi-agency beyond ourselves, communities and the way that everybody has rallied together, I think is just evident. I do put a thank out to every one of the councillors in this chamber. You have provided a lot of invaluable intelligence as these events have occurred, particularly with Storm Burt and Storm Dara. You know, that was free flowing information and as much as I think we were really well adept in terms of putting communications out, in terms of keeping communities informed, which is critically important during these situations, the real time information that came back in from you all was incredibly helpful. But I think finally, it is, what's at the heart of this is just, I guess, I'm sure that the workforce will be very grateful, I think, of hearing the comments that you've provided and I'm sure we'll make sure that those are fed back into staff. But yeah, on behalf of myself and I guess the leadership team, yeah, massive thanks for what's been a phenomenal effort. Thank you.
Thank you. And now to the agenda. Apologies for absence. I've received apologies from councillor Riley and councillor Stephens. Are there any more? Councillor John?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Apologies from councillor Lisa Dimmock and councillor Fay Bronfield.
Chair, we have apologies from councillor Wright and she says she'll be arriving late.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Harris?
Chair, I have councillor Taylor, she is in the building but unable to just get in here at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, declarations of interest. Councillor McCann?
Thank you Chair. Item 8B, personal interests. My father's a farmer and that's the county councillor Rachel Butler's motion. Thank you.
Chair, may I declare a personal interest in my motion to say that I have a personal interest but it's not prejudicial. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Councillor Jones?
Likewise, myself, personal and possibly prejudicial interest in the second motion.
I must ask you to confirm if it's prejudicial or personal?
I wish I could. We'll make it prejudicial as well then. Thank you.
Yes councillor?
I'd like to declare an interest please in the same motion, 8B, personal.
Councillor Harris?
Yes Chair, may I also declare a personal and prejudicial interest in the agented item and I will leave the room. Thank you.
Point of order Chair. I appreciate it's a personal statement for each individual member, but I don't see how it would be prejudicial for any member given that the authority does not have direct responsibility over the decision.
That's not a point of order. However, it is in the judgement of the individual as to whether their interest is personal or prejudicial. I myself am going to declare a prejudicial interest in this item on the basis that my husband is the ultimate beneficiary in a will which affects a family farm. And that's my judgement. So, I don't think I can do any other in that. I don't know if that's any help to anyone else. Councillor Jones, did you clarify? You said prejudicial.
I did, yes.
So, both myself and councillor Jones will have to leave the chamber at the point that this... And councillor Harris will have to leave the chamber at the point where this debate is, this motion is debated. Oh, I'm sorry councillor Webb?
Thank you, same for me actually. Thank you very much. Prejudicial interest, thank you.
Thank you. Right, Chair's announcements we'll take as read. Item four is receipt of petitions. I believe we have a petition to be presented.
Thank you Chair. This petition, I'm councillor Jackie Strong from Cross Ward in Caldecott. This petition is put before council on behalf of the residents of Caldecott and it is entitled 'Design Over Health and Safety', question mark. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this petition this afternoon. In doing so, I am acknowledging the town and county councils and residents who have raised their concerns about the safety of this scheme. Consultants, architects and fads come and go, MCC officers come and go, cabinet members also come and go, however, the residents of Caldecott are left with this debacle. So, the petition is as read. We, the undersigned residents of Caldecott and surrounding areas, wish to express our deep concerns over the safety of the zebra crossing on Sandy Lane adjacent to the cross Public House. In particular, the colouring of the strips making them less visible than traditional crossings with black and white stripes. The orientation of the crossing make it difficult for drivers to see that it is there until they are very close to it, particularly in dark and wet weather. One of the beacons has been missing for several months. This has since been repaired. The use of a new parking zone is less effective than double yellow lines in deterring drivers parking close to the crossing. There is little or no enforcement when drivers park on the zigzags at the crossing. We call our Monmouthshire County Council to publish the results of the safety reviews that have been carried out on the crossing or to carry out an urgent review and publish the results. Obviously, I accept that the beacon has since been repaired. I would like the petition to go to the next place scrutiny meeting. I've already put it on our forward work planner and for the relevant cabinet member and officers to come and address the committee with our concerns from the residents of Caldecott. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Strong. And just to confirm that that petition has now been formally received by the council. Thank you. We now move on to item number five, which is the public question slot. We have a question from Mr John T. Pearce. Is Mr Pearce here? Could I invite you to come down to the chamber, Mr Pearce? When you're ready, Mr Pearce.
Good afternoon councillors, Prun and Dar. I would like to ask one important question. Why has Monmouthshire County Council removed key protection for Monmouth's endangered greater horseshoe bats? Newton Court Bat Site, a site of special scientific interest, is home to Monmouth's horseshoe bats. These bats are on the red list for extinction and they are now considered extinct in Northern Europe. The site is one of only three sites in Wales and the only one in Monmouthshire. These bats rely on dung insects from grazing cows and on hedgerow insects. Unfortunately, Newton Court is less than 950 metres from a site in the RLDP HA4, Dixon Road, which will remove 20 football pitches of grazing land, it will rip out established hedges and it will add artificial light and interrupt commuting lines. The site is well within the three kilometre core sustenance zone for the endangered greater horseshoe bats. And I've found that key protections have been removed from the very document that is meant to protect the bats. That is the habitat regulations assessment. I have prepared around the chamber a number of handouts of this, but you can also find the words in the RLDP pact that you were asked to vote on on the 24th of October. I'm afraid it's rather buried. It is on page 1291 of the 1800 pages that you were sent. You were given very little notice to go through that. I have been through every single page of that document. Environmental consultants ACOM recommended stringent safeguards to protect the bats. They specified the need for a suite of bat surveys, e.g. bat activity surveys, roost emergence surveys between April and September to assess and mitigate impacts on bass populations. Very sensible. However, Monmouthshire County Council expressed concern that the wording was too prescriptive and asked to change the wording to remove specific details of the need for bat surveys, survey seasons and the potential need for mitigation. So, if you want to build an extension of one room on one house, you need a bat survey, like this one that was carried out on my house in 2022. But if you want to build 270 houses ripping out prime bat feeding habitat and hedgerows, you don't. So, I have one simple question to ask. Why? Why would the council do this? Why would the council not want to strengthen, not weaken protection for the bats? And why would the council want to make it so easy for the developer to develop houses? Why? Why? Thank you councillors Diocanvar.
Thank you. And I'm going to invite councillor Griffiths to respond.
Thanks very much and thanks very much indeed for the question on what we would all consider to be a very important matter. It has certainly not been the intention and it is not our belief that we have in any way removed protection from any ecological feature in the county including greater horseshoe bats. The site which is currently being proposed is a smaller site than that which was previously proposed, proposed only a few years ago and was deliberately separated from the horseshoe bat habitat. Notwithstanding that, what's been circulated today is the habitats assessment which accompanies the proposed deposit or the deposit local development plan. We do not have the authority to remove any species or site protection. It is not within our legal powers to do so. In accordance with legislation, every stage of the replacement local development plan is considered for its potential adverse impacts on sites protected under the conservation of habitats and species regulation. The habitat regulation assessment for the deposit RLDP considers each policy of the plan, which considers each policy of the plan alongside it and available on the MCC website. In addition, and I think this is a crucial point, should this proposed site emerge as part of an approved replacement local development plan, then any development on that site would require a planning application and there would be, as there currently is, and all members here will have experience of this practice, as members and many, including myself, as applicants myself, will know that in making a planning application, you're required to submit detailed ecological surveys and proposed mitigation and enhancement strategies to meet the requirements of the RLDP and of national planning legislation. The points raised are important. I will give them serious consideration. We're in a process of consultation and I regard this question and answer as part of that consultation. It will be possible for us to conclude that further amendments to the deposit local development plan would be beneficial in the light of the question asked, the presentation made, and we will be able to bring any changes back to the council in our report from the consultation. In addition to that, whatever is said here, whatever is said in the consultation will be fully reported to the planning inspectorate and the inspector also, as well as this council, will consider whether the precise text in the local development plan conforms with the points raised in the consultation. So again, the point raised is an important one. It will lead at several stages to further consideration and we will report that consideration back both to the public and to the council.
Thank you.
I understand I'm allowed to ask one supplementary question?
You may. We've got a little time left.
Very simply, could you, the councillor, explain why the wording was considered, basic my original question, was considered too prescriptive and why that wording which would have safeguarded the bats, clearly safeguarded the bats, was removed?
I think you can, we can all go policy by policy through a local development plan and you will find that there's always a balance to be struck between policies which are necessary for the protection of all sorts of interests, including our environmental interests, and whether that balance has been struck in accordance to the potential need for development alongside it. So, there's a balance to be struck. Whether we've got the right balance is one that we will give further consideration to.
I'm not sure I've fully answered my question, but thank you.
Thank you. So, next item, our next item is to confirm the minutes... So next item, our next item business is to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 24th of October 2024. Do I see any dissent? Councillor Howarth?
No, I'm just going to move, Chair.
Okay, so no dissent, so I will assume that those, there is no dissent. Those minutes are adopted and approved. Thank you.
Chair, just before we progress to the substantive items on the agenda, can we just wish a very warm welcome to our newest county councillor, councillor Martin Newall? Since this is his first meeting, he's made quite a splash since he joined the town council earlier this year and we're really excited to see the contribution he's going to make representing the people of Town Ward on this authority.
Thank you. Yes, I should have done that at the start of the meeting. I've done it in person, but anyway, welcome councillor Newall to Monmouthshire County Council.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
On to the next item of business, which is the deforestation-free champion council. We've got a special item, which I've used my chair's discretion to lodge into the agenda today, and I'm going to ask councillor Brocklesby to introduce that item.
I said welcome in person councillor Newall, but welcome to the council. Good to see you here. It's with absolute huge pleasure to welcome back the group of young citizens of Monmouthshire who, when they were in year six and they're now in year eight, came, well, I came to see them and they also saw ministers, to tell us about their determination to ensure that not just Monmouthshire but Wales was not extracting products that would cut down the rainforest. They wanted Wales and as much of the world as possible to be deforestation-free. And they're doing it bit by bit. We have agreed to change our menu because of a menu that they developed along with the size of Wales. So we now have chickpea korma on our school, primary school memos. They made it to the New York Climate Conference via our deputy first minister. An astonishing achievement. And it reminded me, some of you I met in September of last year, I think, or this year, September of this year, at a meeting about sustainability at the Haberdashers School. And I made that point that never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. And this small group of committed young citizens of Monmouthshire are on track to do just that. And aren't we really proud? Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming back, not just to report on progress, which will be just wonderful to hear, but also to hear us to commit to a charter. We promised we would. We promised we'd become champions. You held us to account. We've been working on it since you last came and we're ready to do it, gang. So thank you.
Thank you. So over to our young people.
Before this very exciting vote goes ahead, myself and Marcel wanted to share a few words of thanks to the chair, members of the council and the sustainability team, including Hazel, Elaine, Marianne and Helen, on behalf of all of the young people we represent. We wanted to let you know how much we appreciate the reports that you have tabled today and all the efforts that you have made over the past 18 months to honour our words with action. Over the last two years, we've encountered many incredible individuals that have championed our voices and advanced our cause. But it is only this council that has the power to take action on the things that we've been calling for and for that we are very grateful.
And it's true to say that we would never have gotten this far if it weren't for individuals helping us all along the way. And we'd like to say thank you to Size of Wales and our brilliant primary school teachers for enriching us with the knowledge we needed and to shape this journey. Miss Tocar, Atos Bassan, Miss Edwards at Raglan, Miss Vernon at Kilmarnock and Mr Jones at Andu Primary School, as well as secondary schools, Monmouth Comprehensive School and Habs Monmouth. And they've all inspired us to stand up and speak out rather than telling us to sit down and be quiet. But we've learnt so much more than just the plight of tropical forests.
When MS Lee Waters, Delith Jewell, Peter Fox, Monmouthshire Beacon and even the BBC first showed interest in hearing our presentation, we learnt the true power of communication. When Ang Harrow Underwood at the Cook Along Club first helped us to redesign our korma, we learnt that any problem, even one as big as tropical deforestation, can be solved with creative thinking.
When Ben Taylor-Davis invited us to his farm to show us regenerative farming in action, and when Lower House Farm proved that soy could be taken away, we learnt that we're not alone in this fight. In fact, we had some pretty smart and determined allies. And when Edward Morgan at Castor Cowal answered our questions honestly and told us that they could do better, we learnt that true partnership is not about pretending that everything is perfect, it's about taking brave new steps forward and together.
When Jennifer Sanbarze and the Wampis shared their stories about the true costs of deforestation, we learnt that true courage comes in many different forms, often with a smiling face, and that passionate persistence can move mountains. When Ace Monmouth took on our campaign, we learnt that true power lies in collaboration. When people as inspiring as Kate Humble and James Nathan marvelled at our story, we finally started learning to believe in ourselves. And when our town council and our county council took our words seriously and invited us to help them shape history, we learnt that politics is not something confined to parliament, councils and grown-ups. We learnt that the key to fixing everything is all of us and we, the young people of this county, have a seat at your table.
Tell me and I forget, teach me and I might keep it, involve me and I learn. I would like to offer our thanks to everyone who involved us in their lives, their work and their mission, because you have taught us never to give up. We've learnt so much, we've learnt so much from this opportunity. So once again, on behalf of the young people of Monmouthshire, thank you for involving us in our decision-making today. And we hope our collaboration is just the start of a different way of involving young people in shaping the future of this county.
Thank you. That's inspired us all, I think. Thank you so much for that. And I'm aware that, I think you're under quite severe time constraints, so you won't be able to stay in the chamber very much longer. I was going to invite the leaders of the different groups to express their appreciation, which I know is heartfelt, but I think as we've all stood as a standing ovation to you, you can take those expressions of gratitude and appreciation as read. I believe you'd hope to distribute something after the end of this debate. How would you like to proceed? We've got, we've got, we've got quite a lot of talking to do yet.
Chair, could you put your mic on please so we can hear?
So we're just discussing the logistics of how we proceed. May I ask councillors, would they be willing, when we, councillor Maybe brings the report to council, perhaps to nominate their leader or one person to respond, to give opportunity for the whole of this wonderful group to be with us when we take the vote? I'm looking for nods. One speaker from each group?
We can try to keep the debate brief. I mean, I don't want to say to councillors, you want, it's a really important issue and you've, you've made it clear to us how important it is to you. So I wouldn't want to curtail the debate.
I'm going to attempt to keep this debate to about 10 minutes, which is tight, but it would be a real shame to not allow these young people to see the results of their work going thus far through, through the council. So I'm going to invite everyone to be as brief as they possibly can. And with that moving on swiftly, can I invite Catrin, sorry councillor Maybe, to present the report?
Thank you, thank you Chair. Council, I'm delighted to be following on from the inspiring words of the children to present to you a report recommending that we become a deforestation-free champion council. This requires us to do two things, to sign up to the deforestation-free champions charter, which you received in your papers, and to develop and implement an action plan, setting out the steps that we'll take as deforestation-free champions, both to understand and reduce our impact on tropical deforestation and to champion the importance of these issues in our communities. I'm not going to do a lengthy speech, but just to highlight a couple of things that the kids have really taught us, to be honest. Why deforestation matters so very much? Basically because preventing it will make a significant difference to reducing climate change and protecting indigenous communities in tropical forests, both now and for the long term. Tropical forests are essential to life on earth. They absorb vast amounts of carbon, produce oxygen, maintain the water cycle and play a significant role in maintaining the global climate. They're also hotspots for biodiversity and a home to around 80% of documented species as well as millions of people. But our world's tropical forests are under threat. Demand for commodities such as beef, soy, palm oil, cacao and coffee drives deforestation in forests like the Amazon. In the process, one of our best defences against the climate crisis is being destroyed, an area nearly six times the size of Wales every year. And we're particularly grateful to the Size of Wales Organisation for educating us on this point as well. We're all part of the deforestation economy and it's difficult to completely remove all risk of deforestation. It's in the food we eat, the products we buy, the fuel in our vehicles. But we can take practical actions to help to significantly reduce that risk, like using ethical certifications, circularity approaches, reducing waste. And for example, we've been learning from what the children did, working with school, on school meals menus and looking at where our food is sourced. They looked into the issue of soy and animal feed and heard from Townsend Farm about soy-free feeds and the chickpea korma that you created has become legendary. The Size of Wales Organisation want Wales to become a deforestation-free nation and by signing up to this charter, we're promising to do our bit to help by working towards this goal of being deforestation-free in our operations here in the county council and encouraging others in our communities to do the same. So I hope you will want to support with, or support us in signing this motion and signing up to this charter. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Butler?
Thank you Chair and thank you councillor Maybe. I think you've said a lot of the way it's been put together and I do thank you for bringing it here today, all of you. Really, it's a big thank you from the whole of the Conservative group. I'm speaking on behalf of all my colleagues. We're absolutely delighted to hear from our young people how they've been learning about how their actions and our actions here in the UK might have been causing the deforestation of countries far away, places they may never have heard of, let alone visited. You've brought something very important here for us today. It must have been very hard to realise that your favourite chicken nuggets might have helped cause the deforestation of a rainforest and the consequent loss of the many animals we all love, like orangutans, sloths and fruit bats, personal favourite. So how much better it will be for nature if you grow, if we grow here in our country our own soybeans and eat our own soybeans rather than feeding it to chickens? I very much enjoyed your soybean korma. I understand it's firm favourite on the menu in a number of schools. And it sounds like you had an absolutely fantastic time learning at Regen Ben's farm. So I'm glad to see the recommendation from Monmouthshire to come, deforestation-free champion council, come to us here today and I strongly support it. Thank you all.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Chandler?
Yeah, thank you Chair and thank you everybody. And yeah, and thank you the pupils, the students for bringing this forward. I think it's a lot of pride we have in, in our young people today, but following on from the traditions of activism amongst young people. So, you know, I can remember my children in your place speaking when this council was debating declaring a climate emergency and speaking on behalf of future generations. And since then, we've had a lot of activism from young people, including the youth strikes for the climate, which has been hugely important in bringing forward the necessity for action on climate change, a necessity unfortunately many of our elders and our governments have yet to fulfil that ambition. So we'd like to thank them for that. In terms of this issue, clearly it's hugely important, speaking, you know, as both on behalf of the Green Party, where we see the interdependence of all aspects of nature and how we are all dependent on that, that web of nature around the world, but also as an individual, as someone that's worked internationally for most of my life, working with marginalised communities around the world and looking at poverty, looking at environment and other issues there. It is, I know from first hand how important this issue is and how it affects people's livelihoods, people's environment, people's wellbeing around the world and how that is impacting on us here. And we've talked earlier today and we will talk later on this afternoon about the floods that we've experienced just in this last few weeks. That is not disconnected from this motion about correcting rainforests, as councillor Maybe highlighted out. So I really want to emphasise the importance of this issue, the pride that we take in our young people for bringing it to our attention, but the pride we can take as a council in becoming one of the first to take this forward and hope that is going to have an effect on others around Wales, around the UK and beyond. And the impact of this, the ripples from this decision that we make today, I think could be very significant. So thank you and I commend this paper to the, to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Chandler. I've got no one else asking to, councillor Howarth?
Yes, thank you Chairman and just following on from the leaders of the groups, all their kind comments to our people, our young people, I won't call you young because sometimes you might think that's a little bit whatever. So I'll just say our courageous people from, from the schools within Monmouthshire for bringing a presentation for us today and giving us some little taste of soybeans. I do like them. I do have them at home, so they are important. I always remember as a young child having soya meat, that's many, many years ago as well. So it's been out there for a while. Must I say as well that actually if you've got something you want to do, follow it through? I think it's made very clear by, by our speakers that when you started the journey, you didn't know how far you would get with it. You've reached a pinnacle now and you never thought probably you'd get there and that is the dream you have to have. If you've got something, get on with it. Don't listen to people to tell you to sit down, just deliver it and get on with it. That's important. I thank you for that as well, because it's not easy. There are always people criticizing out there, but you carry on and well done. Must I say as well, following on from the problems we've had in the last few months here, that every tree that we have lost, and we've lost many hundreds, probably in the county, and there's probably many thousands being taken out in the county or countywide, it would be nice that we can replant them and landowners do replant as well, because going back to the carbon side of all this, fossil fuels are still going to be out there. There's no doubt about that. Even though people don't like that, we still have to rely on fossil fuels, how long we rely on them for. But what they are important is having the trees to sort the carbon up and that's how important it is as well. So when you, you see projects out there where trees have been planted, we must support that and I think it's important that we don't forget that every tree we lose, we must replant. Thank you all. Thank you for coming and giving us your time as well and I wish you all a happy Christmas and have some fun. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. I don't see any more hands up, so I'm going to invite, I'm going to invite us to vote. So we'll need a vote up to accept the recommendations in the report. the recommendations in the report. That's carried unanimously. So thank you. I believe there's something that you guys would like to do. Please proceed.
Thank you for voting and as a token of our thanks and in celebration of all of your support, we would now like to offer deforestation-free community badges to the Chair, Sue McConnell, and Vice Chair, Peter Strong. The Cabinet Lead for Climate and Environment, Catechron Mayby. And also the leaders of each political party, so Mary Ann Brocklesby, Labour. Ian Chandler, Green. And Frances Taylor, Independents.
I think we should let you go now. Much as we'd like to keep you here, you're very inspiring. Thank you so much. Thank you everybody. I intend to resume. We've got a couple of, we should be able to get through the next couple of items before Right, thank you very much everyone. Our next item is the Charter for Families Bereaved Through Public Tragedy. Councillor Brocklesby.
Thank you Chair. Councillors, I bring before you an important and timely report that reminds us that there are, that in any response to public tragedy, there is always a dimension of a response to people's trauma. And that any response will require that it should be professional, compassionate and above all humane. I say timely because we have just reflected in this chamber, the call on public servants to act beyond what's expected of them in the face of crisis and disaster. Since October, Monmashir has seen four major incidents: floods, two named storms and a fire in Abergaveni. The effects of these events have been tangible and palpable for all our communities. And quite rightly, we have honoured our communities and we've honoured our businesses and our civic groups. I'd like to take a moment to honour you councillors for having performed vital community leadership roles and advocating for your wards and their communities and families. Now, I'd like us all together to imagine a further tragedy, but this time one that involves the loss of life. Whilst we never want to imagine this happening in our communities, the truth is that in communities across the United Kingdom, these tragedies have happened, may well happen in the future, and they have shaped and impacted their communities for generations. One only has to look at our near neighbours in Merthyr Tydfil and the impact of Aberfan tragedy to be reminded of the impact of a civil disaster, or the families impacted by the Manchester Arena bombing or the Grenfell Tower fire. And if there was to be a tragedy of this nature in Monmashir, as a category one responder within the civil contingencies legislation, we would be required to provide a full response to the tragedy and lead our communities to their recovery. This is a significant, a huge responsibility and one that features heavily in this organisation's plans and structures. The report I present today talks directly to our role as public servants and the role of this organisation in responding in a full way to any tragedy that may happen. The tragedy that has brought this charter to our council meeting today was one of the most terrible that has happened in living memory. The Hillsborough tragedy in April 1989 saw 97 Liverpool football fans die in a crush at the Hillsborough Stadium during the FA Cup semi-final. The tragedy saw two levels of response. One that saw safety improvements in the stadium across the United Kingdom, but more profoundly and relevant to today's paper is related to the way in which public bodies responded to the tragedy. So the charter that I am asking council to adopt today and to take steps to embed in our planning and preparation comes as a direct result of the Hillsborough Independent Panel chaired by the Right Reverend James Jones. His report, which was included in the agenda pack with its bold title, 'The Patronising Disposition of the Unaccountable Power', makes for harrowing reading. In the words of bereaved family members, it documents behaviours by public servants that were disrespectful, dehumanising and added to the individual trauma of bereaved families. In response, the report has as its first recommendation that public bodies sign up to the charter with its six commitments and I am going to read them in full, council. Number one, in the event of a public tragedy, activate its emergency plan and deploy its resources to rescue victims, to support the bereaved and to protect the vulnerable. Number two, place the public interest above our own reputation. Number three, approach forms of public scrutiny, including public inquiries and inquests, with candour, in an open, honest and transparent way, making full disclosure of relevant documents, materials and facts. Our objective is to assist the search for the truth. We accept that we should learn from the findings of external scrutiny and from past mistakes. Number four, avoid seeking to defend the indefensible or to dismiss or disparage those who may have suffered where we have fallen short. Number five, ensure all members of staff treat members of the public and each other with mutual respect and with courtesy. Where we fall short, we should apologise straightforwardly and genuinely. Number six, recognise that we are accountable and open to challenge. We will ensure that the processes are in place to allow the public to hold us to account for the work we do and for the way in which we do it. We do not knowingly mislead the public or the media. These commitments were set out in paragraph 3.2 in the report that you have before you. The drive to adopt this charter and its six commitments sits within the frameworks within which we all, across Monmashir and Gwent, work. That's with all our emergency response partners. And all of our category one partner agencies across Wales are taking forward the adoption of this charter before a national signing in the spring of 2025. And this will precede what will become known as the Hillsborough Law, which will be taken before the UK Parliament. So what we're doing here, council, is committing before we are asked to commit for recognising that we have a moral obligation as well as a legal duty when it comes into force. So councillors, I would hope that all of you across the chamber can support me today in adopting this charter and thereby embed the commitments in all that we plan, all that we do and all that we monitor. Thank you councillors.
Thank you. I don't see any hands raised to speak to this report or ask any questions of it, in which case we would go straight to the vote to accept the two recommendations. So can we have the voting function please for voting on the recommendations? Thank you. And that functions therefore now. Thank you. So our next item of business is 7.3, appointment outside bodies. Can I invite councillor Sandals to lead this item?
Dear Chair, very briefly, council is required to make appointments to various external organisations to ensure that the council is informed and has a say of how some of our partner organisations operate. Normally these appointments are made at the AGM, but due to the resignation of a county councillor, new appointments are required to be made in year. The report recommends that councillor Callard is appointed to the Joint Council for Wales and that councillor Griffiths is appointed to Ur Prentice, which would fill the vacancies held by the previous councillor. Dear-
Thank you councillor. Are there anyone wishing to speak on this item? No, in which case we would go straight to the vote, excuse me. Some coughs and colds going around. Could we go straight to the vote on that then, please, if there's no wishing to speak? So we'll need the voting function, thank you. Oh, it's there. So our next item of business is motion to council. The first motion is 8.1, so I'd invite councillor Butler. I had thought it had been said that we were going to have a break. I think this might go on. I don't know how this feels. Excuse me one second. I do. I'm looking for, I'm happy to have a break now. Yeah, I'm seeing lots of nods. Break it is. So back at quarter past please. We should be resuming business. We're core rate, we're core rate, will you take your seats, please? Right, thank you. Next item of business. A bit of quiet, please. Next item of business is motions to council. So the first motion to be debated today is submitted by county councillor Jan Butler.
Thank you, chairman.
Do you have a second?
Thank you, councillor Jones. So, good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to read the motion for the benefit of those who are listening online. This council thanks the emergency workers, volunteers and all those who supported Monmouthshire residents during Storm Burt. Expresses concern that a lack of maintenance of the county's drainage infrastructure will have exacerbated flood risks and calls on the council to reassess its processes to mitigate flood events and evaluate the size and funding of the workforce dedicated to drainage maintenance and environmental management. I think we've already heard rather a lot about Storm Burt and our response, and I think, I think everybody in this room has probably been affected in some way or has supported a resident or has done some work since we've had our two recent storms. And I just thank everyone for their efforts. So during the recent Storm Burt, we experienced unprecedented levels of flooding across Monmouthshire. And this was not just related to the high levels of our rivers or storm surges, there were many localised events. And again, last weekend, Storm Dara brought a fresh set of challenges in its wake, with high winds bringing down trees and power lines blocking roads. Some residents were affected and without power until late Monday afternoon. Now, this was the fourth named storm of the year. In 23, like 2023, there were 12 named storms, and that's the most since the first season in 2015, when the Met Office began naming storms. A storm is only named when it has the potential to cause an amber, be prepared, or a red, take action warning. It's impossible to predict the severity or frequency of storms, which can run consecutively, and no one can predict when Yowin, Floris and Gerbin will arrive, but those are the next three names. No one should really be in any doubt about the reality of climate change by now, as we are living through its effects. We have had two 100-year flood events in the last seven years. I pay tribute to the operational emergency response team and Gwent Strategic Coordinating Group, and there were an awful lot of agencies involved, Sutra, NRW, Western Power, Network Rail, the Blue Light Services, to name a few. And I thank officers for the regular media releases and updates that they made throughout these events. Many of my colleagues have noticed, though, the reduction in the maintenance of culverts, gullies, drainage ditches and gutters in their wards in the last few years. In fact, I know quite a few councillors who've cleared out some ditches for themselves. So in preparing for today, I've spoken with many of my colleagues, residents, officers and teams on the ground carrying out the recovery work. There are a very lot of tired, there are a lot of very tired colleagues out there. I have personally learnt much about the drainage network, the difference between culverts, gullies and drainage ditches, and how to get hold of sandbags, about the ability of the drainage network to cope. It does have finite capacity, designed for conditions many years back, and many assumed blocked drains have largely been drains beyond their capacity to cope. In my own community of Goitra Vara, there have been flooded houses and businesses, flooded roads, roadblocks, fallen trees, an overflowing canal, a landslide onto the main railway, and now a rapidly enlarging sinkhole in Goitra Recreation Park, not quite what they're experiencing in Merthyr, I'm afraid. I'm glad to say. I've also had the mental debate as to how much information to put out on my social media accounts, and I've had to come out of my comfort zone of mainly observing and responding to queries to actually posting information, as I wanted to keep my residents safe. Pubs, cafes and other businesses have been affected by lengthy closures of the A4042 trunk road, and residents have become exasperated as they've tried to move around the ward to conduct their daily business. What I also learnt is that in my own community, the drainage network is not perfectly mapped. Officers on the ground are responding to challenges beyond the knowledge that is available to them. We have a number of teams responding to the various challenges, flood teams, highways teams, neighbourhood services, environmental health and more, and they each have different areas of responsibility. Recently, I met the flood team who are working hard to resolve a recurrent flooding issue in Longhouse Barn, Penpelenny. I learned firstly from them how few officers we have in this department, and then about the other aspects of their work. Much of their time is spent in carrying out SUDs approvals for developments between 100 and 500 square metres. I understand that funds generated from this work does not actually cover the cost of the officers' time, and freed from that responsibility, officers could be reallocated into running small-scale flood alleviation schemes like the Longhouse Barn issue that first came to light in 2018. I also found out that much of the funding for flood schemes comes through a grant funding process, and this also eats away at officer time. So I believe there is some scope for improving, to improve our flooding response through working smarter with the workforce we have. But my head is actually telling me that what we really need is a whole lot more funding if we are to respond better to this emerging challenge of climate change, and that what we really need is more people on the ground acting proactively. From the highways team, I learned that there is no schedule of works to clear drainage ditches, and to be clear here, drainage ditches are not a designed part of the system, many being over 100 years old and not necessarily belonging to Monmouth County Council's responsibility, but maybe to the farmer. But their role is to take water off the highway. Now, there's not been a maintenance schedule for the drainage ditches we do have for over 40 years, and they only get cleared when a problem occurs. The main message I'm making here is we have ceased to be proactive in the maintenance of our drainage network and have become reactive in our response. This seems to me to be a very dangerous approach. It's also a fact that the water table is now so high that water pours off our fields, and realistically, what can we do about that? Well, we just talked about deforestation, I think we need to think about reforestation. For sound environmental reasons, we have reduced the use of glyphosate, and our workforce is now using mechanical means to manage verges and hedgerows in summer. This is incredibly labour intensive, and we do not have the workforce to match this new and future challenge. I'm proud that here in Monmouthshire, we allow our verges and hedgerows to grow and thrive, that we are part of the Gwent Green Grid, and it makes my heart sing as I travel through our beautiful county in the summer when the herbs are at their best. But during this summer, many of my councillor colleagues were approached by residents with concerns about the overgrowth of verges and weeds in pavement cracks and the gutters in towns and villages. And in the last few weeks, it has been the build-up of leaves that has given cause for concern. Unfortunately, Storm Burt coincided with the point of maximum leaf fall, and leaf litter contributed in part to the blocking of drains. Storm Dara then completed the job, bringing down many small twigs and branches that are now being mashed to a slippery mulch, sorry, mulch by the action of traffic. I have no doubt that the localised flooding in the village of Penpelenny was in part related to the capacity of the drainage infrastructure of the village to cope, but this was exacerbated by drains being blocked by debris from trees and vegetation. but this was exacerbated by drains being blocked by debris from trees and vegetation. I believe that as a consequence of our environmental approach...
We've got one minute left.
Sorry, and lack of investment. We now have miles of unmaintained ditches, culverts and drains, and our workforce is stretched beyond its capacity to respond. It's our statutory duty to take care of our environment, but we must prioritise the serious risk to human life and protect our properties and businesses from flooding, high winds and other natural hazards. Thank you, Chairman.
Chair, I'd like to propose an amendment, if I may. I don't know if this is the appropriate moment.
Is that seconded? Yep, thank you. Seconded by councillor Chandler. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. It's only to make an amendment to the second bullet in the motion, to change it to recognises the increased frequency of severe weather events related to climate change and the need for many forms of intervention to mitigate the impact on our communities. That's the middle bullet point only. And I did send the, I just sent the text through. I think, hopefully you could put it in the chat.
Could we have just put in the amendment, put in the chat for information for members to refer to? And I can ask the proposer if that's acceptable.
To be quite honest with you, that completely changes the second bullet point.
I wasn't intending to change the substantive text of the motion, so the third bullet remains the same and the first. And I'm happy to explain.
Can you say what you're proposing to add? Or what are you taking away and what you're proposing to add?
So replacing expresses concern that a lack of maintenance of the drainage infrastructure will have exacerbated flood risks with recognises the increased frequency of severe weather events related to climate change and the need for many forms of intervention to mitigate the impact on our communities. And I'm very happy to explain the rationale.
To hold for one second, we're just having this put into the chat, so it gives everyone a chance to read it and look at it. So just take a minute.
Shall I type it in directly? I thought I'd sent it. You got it.
That's in the chat now. So let's give you a second order to read it. If everyone's had a chance to read that, I'm just going to check first whether that amendment is accepted by the proposer.
Sorry, Chair, it seems to have taken up the need for firm maintenance. This is really about being proactive in our approach to the maintenance. It seems to have taken the word, if the word maintenance was in there somewhere, I think I'd be happy.
It is. It's in the third. So I should say this amendment was, advice has been sought to the monitoring officer about the validity of this motion. He's satisfied that it stands. So my question to you is, is that acceptable to you? I'm asking the proposer of the motion, not the leader.
I'm sorry, are you talking about the amendment?
Yes.
I'm not happy with it because I feel it takes that.
Thank you. In that case, we need to proceed to debate the amendment. So what we're doing now is not debating the motion. We are debating whether or not to accept this proposed amendment to the motion. The bit that always wears me here is what order we speak in. I think the sensible thing is to start off fresh. Hands up. So if you want to speak in favour or... Yeah, I'll be asking Catherine, maybe, as a councillor, maybe, as the proposer of the amendment, to speak to that first. And then anyone else who wishes to debate whether we accept this amendment. Not, we're not debating the motion itself, just whether we would accept this, adopt this amendment to the motion. I hope that's clear. I don't want debate on the motion itself.
Point of order, Chair. Does the second also speak before it's open to the floor?
No.
That's any point. So if we've got the, well, I can, I think I can probably ask councillor Maybe to propose this amendment, and then I'll be looking for fresh hands up on a new list. Please, yeah. Fresh hands up while we have this separate debate about whether the amendment is to be adopted or not. Councillor Maybe.
Thank you. And I do, I do thank councillor Butler for the, for the, bringing the motion. I'll explain my reasons for proposing the amendment. The events of these past few weeks have been yet another reminder of the impacts of climate change with which we are now living. Colleagues will know that I've worked on climate change issues for most of the past 40 years, and I've seen public awareness move during that time from scepticism to acknowledgement and even to extreme anxiety. We know now that severe weather events will become ever more frequent and that we have to adapt to this and do what we can to mitigate the worst impacts, in parallel with continuing to do all we can to try to turn the curve on our carbon emissions for ourselves as well as for future generations. The maintenance of our drainage systems is crucially important, of course, and additional resources to enable us to do this better will always be welcome. Although the painful truth is that we will always have to weigh this against other budget challenges faced across the authority. Our officers are still out inspecting areas impacted by the recent storms and will be requesting additional support from Welsh Government to repair and maintain flood alleviation assets. However, I propose the amendment to the second bullet point because I think it's very important that the community understands the bigger picture here. In talking to others working in our local river catchments, I've come to understand that even the most perfectly maintained local drainage would not cope with the intensity of rainfall we saw in Storm Burt. You only have to look at the terrible floods around the world in the past months to realise this. Across the world, in Spain, as councillor Howarth has mentioned, but also all across the world, we've had appalling floods and everywhere it's caused immense devastation. Climate change has already made our winters 13% wetter, and it's shortening the return period of these events. The current models are that by 2070, our winters will be 60% wetter. So just to give you an example of the quantities of intense rainfall, the Wainoosh Foundation estimate that 20 millimetres of rain fell at 7am alone on November the 24th in the mono catchment. About 87 millimetres fell between 2am on the 23rd and 2pm on the 24th. Now, Wainoosh Foundation estimate that 47% of this would have been discharged as overland flow. So as you've already pointed out yourself, it's important to understand that highways drainage is designed to cope with surface water on the highways and not to take excessive amounts of water running off fields and watercourses from private land. At local level, officers work with riparian owners of drainage systems to try to ensure it doesn't overwhelm highways drainage. But under extreme events like Storm Burt, we've seen that this is likely to happen, and drainage systems will be overwhelmed, however perfectly looked after they are. On the one hand, we have water draining off the land, and on the other, we have high river levels pushing water back into brooks and streams. It's increasingly recognised that the way in which we use the land and how we treat our soils is possibly the most critical issue in mitigating the impacts of flooding going forward. I have seen data from the Wainoosh Foundation showing that within the Usk catchment, 80% of the short and medium-term rainfall storage capacity is in the soil itself. 80% is in the soil itself. Putting it simply, we need to make the most of the potential for sponginess that exists in soils. Other actions include leaky dams to help attenuate flow, and of course, the planting of trees and the right crops that can retain moisture in the soil and not leaving fields bare in winter, as well as reducing the erosion of riverbanks and the loss of soil into the rivers. Getting this right could help with both flooding and droughts, and it's also a big part of reducing the problem of excess phosphorus and nitrogen in the water. Our flooding officers are supporting initiatives from Welsh Government, NRW and Dalgomery to promote natural flood management on farmland. But what we can do as a council is just one small part of this jigsaw. There are farmers who have adopted these approaches, in some cases wider regenerative farming practices, and which can provide really helpful role models. They can show that it actually increases the viability of their farms rather than just being a further financial burden, not least by reducing the loss of soil washing into the rivers. The Beacons Water Group is an excellent example of this in the Usk catchment. And on the Y, Ben Taylor-Davis at Townsend Farm has provided mentoring, as we talked about earlier today, through the Ace Monmouth Project. And the Four Rivers Philanthropy Project, which we work with, is working upstream in the Usk to implement nature-based solutions, for example, using timber to create leaky dams. I've also heard interesting ideas around more engineering-based solutions, using the variation as spare capacity in different catchments to reduce flood risk downstream with flow simulation models and real-time weather forecasts. Sorry, I know I've spoken too long. I really just want to sum up by saying, whatever mix of actions are taken, what is clear is that we need to be doing all this on a much larger scale and more quickly. Getting this right upstream is going to be essential to protect our homes and businesses. So yes, the local drainage matters, but it is only one part of the jigsaw. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Garrick.
Yawgadais. I absolutely support this amendment and the spirits of this motion. We have a duty to be honest, open and accountable to our residents. As admitted, the motion doesn't achieve that, and we as a council could not vote for it and say true to our corporate and community plan objectives. We are, through that plan, committed to making Monmouthshire a green place to live and work, with reduced carbon emissions, and making a positive contribution to addressing the climate and nature emergency. We're also committed to making it a safe place to live, where people have a home and a community where they feel secure. The second bullet point of the original motion firmly lays the blame of flooding that result, as being resulting from a lack of maintenance of drains. This leads the leader, the reader or the listener to believe that all we need to do in order to achieve a safe place to address calm climate and nature emergency is to maintain drains. And this simply sadly isn't the case, as my colleague has just very competently and comprehensively explained to us. I genuinely wish it were the case because that would be very much within our gift to rapidly address. Storm Burt, which was referenced in the motion, was an extreme weather event which correlated with climate change, and then more and more likely as average temperatures increased, which was unfortunately borne out by the rapid onset of Storm Dara straight afterwards. We adopted a charter less than an hour ago that said we will not mislead the public in emergencies. Maintenance of drainage isn't the issue here, and it's not fair on residents to say that this would have made a significant difference of the impacts of these storms on their homes and their community facilities. Beyond fairness, we need to think it also implies a liability on this council. It's really clear, and my colleague has already laid it out, that we need a national response to address climate change threats. And it needs to be developed in terms of a coherent national defence against climate change. We need to be realistic and acknowledge the threat of climate change and respond in ways that give genuine offers to our communities in terms of protection and in line with our values and objectives for our community and corporate plan. Now, I'd really like this motion to go through, and I think we can do it with this amendment. But I don't think we can do it with the original wording of the motion, so I would ask everybody to lend their vote to this, so we can actually progress this as a motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Chandler.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Pardon me. And thank you, Chair. So yeah, I'm happy to second this amendment, and in many ways, for the reasons that have just been set out by councillors Maybe and Garrick. But I just want to expand on that a little bit. And I want to sort of repeat maybe my thanks that we've said earlier to council staff and emergency services for the support they gave to my neighbours in Scenfryth, both before, during and after the recent floods. But I also want to take the opportunity to pay tribute to the resilience of our local community in the face of repeated floods or threats of floods. And this is relevant to the motion, so if you bear with me a minute. But in this, neighbours helped each other to prepare for the flooding, moving furniture and precious items upstairs before the flood, and they checked in on each other during the flood using walkie-talkies that were funded by the community council just for this purpose. And they helped each other with the clean-up afterwards. And unfortunately, they're used to the clean-up afterwards because this is the third major flood they've had in the last five years. Volunteers also came together to clean up our village hall so it could open just a few days after the flooding for a community pub night, which was an opportunity to meet up and unwind. And it was eagerly received and made use of by the villagers, myself included. What I wanted to say here and the reason for that is saying that community resilience is so important in the face of our climate emergency, but it doesn't happen without effort of community leaders. After the floods, I was pleased to welcome the Deputy First Minister Hugh Aranka-Davis to meet residents along with the chief executive of NRW, Natural Resources Wales. They were able to see the impact of floodwaters in people's homes and hear residents express their anger about NRW's repeated delays to developing a business case to explore options for flood prevention and protection in Scenfryth. And I hope that we will soon see some real action from the Welsh Government and NRW on this. But the NRW modelling that they did do after the 2020 and 2019 floods did show that there are no simple solutions to flood prevention as the increase in the frequency of flood events is due to a number of factors. Obviously, climate change is driving more extreme weather events resulting in rainfalls that our existing infrastructure wasn't designed for and simply cannot cope with. But it is worth noting, in the context of the original motion, that the drains and gullies in Scenfryth were cleared by the council only a few weeks before the recent floods as part of the scheduled programme. And I did check with them before the floods happened that this had taken place. And because Scenfryth is a vulnerable area, they have a programme of that, in contrast to what was said in the introductory remarks. But those, infrastructure was not built for the volume of rain we now experience. But changing land use also contributes because Scenfryth residents have pointed out to me that the forestry plantations on two hillsides upstream of the village on the river Mono have recently been felled, leaving the hillside bare. Now, I don't know how much of an impact that had, but clearly residents cite that as one of the causes. So we need solutions that go beyond the simplistic of clearing our gullies and drains. We need solutions that include natural flood management measures, such as tree planting and soil management and other planting that absorbs water and buffer strips on riverbanks and so on. And these can complement any engineered solutions to slow or divert surface and river water. And the council is, you know, that is a proactive thing that the council can do. The original motion was asking for something that's proactive. We don't see us as being reactive. We are proactive and have been working with flood teams in Scenfryth for quite some time. But of course, the other thing that we must do is we need to redouble our efforts to stop climate change and to help communities to adapt. Reducing fossil fuel use and stopping greenhouse emissions are much cheaper measures than dealing with the after-effects of our climate emergency. So I support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Neil.
Sorry, I...
I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. Councillor Garrick, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to endorse the comments made earlier about the dedication of council staff in dealing with the recent weather events. Council staff remained at the top of my road on Sunday, the 24th, and overnight on the 25th of November in Monmouth. They monitored the pumps until the level of water on the road fell along with that of the mono. of the mono. Historically, this part of Monmouth, along with Water Lane, have flooded in extreme events. We've got a brook that runs along Wanastow Road. The last time this happened was February 2020. We now have the opportunity to prepare for the next storm event. One of the forms of intervention all members could do is to work with town and community councillors to highlight any areas in their wards where there were issues. Certainly along where the brook is, there was nothing that could have been done to prevent that flooding. It's the level of water coming off the hills, and it floods. It happened four years ago, and it was made, the level of water was maintained by staff, so houses were not flooded. I'd urge all councillors to access and use the MCC app, which the previous administration developed. I suggest that reactive response is not entirely the fault of the current administration, but we can learn. We inherited a council with hundreds of unfilled vacancies. The recent storm events show the importance of all councillors' residents using the MCC app to report issues. Staff can then triage the reports, prioritise those areas in need of urgent attention, conduct further investigation and carry out remediation activities. In my experience, my reports are often acted on within a couple of days. So I support the amendment to the motion if amended, and the motion if amended. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Neil, your turn now.
Thank you, Chair, and I do not support this amendment. The motion itself was not focused on climate change. It was very much focused on the council's responsibilities in dealing with what it can do. And what it can do is to maintain the drainage infrastructure within the county. And the amendment that is proposed totally dodges this absolute responsibility, and it replaces it with a passive set of words that I think for many residents will just sound like evasive waffle, that it's for other groups and it's for other people to be doing things, and maybe the councils included. I don't think that would be an appropriate approach to something as important and as serious as this. If indeed other mitigations is what is intended to be brought into the amendment, to the motion, why not simply add that to Councillor Butler's original motion? So it could be expressed as drainage infrastructure and other mitigation, so that you combine those two things. There was no suggestion in the original motion that maintenance of drainage alone would be the solution to the problem of flooding. It specifically talks about exacerbating the problem, and it really must seem to residents, I'm sure, simply unacceptable to have a blanket approach by the council that suggests that the sheer volume of water would overwhelm the drains right across the county and that nothing could be done about that. Had the drains, the culverts, the gullies been cleared beforehand and been maintained, then that might have some credence, but without that, it just sounds, again, very evasive of responsibilities. So I think I would be proposing the addition of other mitigations to the amendment that is proposed as part of the original, going back to the original motion. And I think it's really important that in this very clear demonstration from the various speakers beforehand of transparency, that we as a council are able to be clear with our residents, what is the standard of maintenance that they should expect in the future? And if we are to live with more rainfall more frequently and more storms more frequently, is what we've experienced in the last two or three weeks to be the new permanent standard that those residents should expect who have been subject to flooding? I think we need to be very clear about that. So I make that proposal, Chair, with your permission, to simply add to the original motion and other mitigations in the second of the three bullet points. Thank you.
One moment. Thank you, councillor. Just to be clear, you're proposing a different amendment, so I'm afraid we're going to have to debate this one first and then go from there. So you're going to have to hold that thought. Councillor Howarth.
Thank you, Chair, and I could talk for at least 10 days about this, because it's something which has been going on for decades. And I do welcome Councillor Neil's statement on perhaps it would have been in the interest of the council to just include Councillor Mayby's amendment, but we are where we are. May I say that actually where I come from, in my part of the county, we have experienced worse than what has just happened in the last couple of weeks. And we have had worse. I don't know if many in here remember the time when all the cattle and all the sheep went down the River Usk, down to Newport. We have had worse. I'm not saying it wasn't bad. Certain areas probably have it different. I can be doing harvest on a day in Gilwyn, and it's raining in Abegwenne, and that's how the climate is with the clouds, whatever. So it's nothing new to have what we're having. I do feel that the motion is correct. I think it is aimed, as Councillor Neil points out, that actually we need to do more to get the water off our highways. We're all mourning, we're all going to come in here in the next month and mourn and mourn and mourn about potholes and erosion of roads. I just wonder how that happens. Is it perhaps with water, or is somebody going around digging the holes for us at night time? I don't really know. It's to do with water. That's not rocket science, you know what I mean? Come on, it's to do with water. Let's get the water off the highway. There's no doubt about it. I sat in a meeting here, and I cannot remember when it was, but there are members in here who were probably sitting in that meeting. Our officers said that we are being proactive, we are clearing about a mile a week of drainage, gully-sucking, cleaning. And when you work out the mileage that we have in the county, I'll probably be long and gone and lawnmower, be cutting the grass over the top every time we get round them all. So that is where we are with this. We've got to do more with it. I have residents complaining about trees growing out of gullies outside the house. The saplings have been in there, they've grown, they've got three or four foot of a tree growing out there, like a small growth tree, and they're going to pull it out. And I do feel that we need to be more proactive. I remember joining this council, we used to have teams, and this is no disrespect to the leading group now, because that was cut by the Conservatives on the basis of it, we didn't have the funding. Each area used to have a team, a truck going around doing maintenance. We used to have the lensmen. Community councils have tried to bring lensmen in into their communities, a paid job to go around and just clean culverts, clean the drains, make sure the water will flow. They were met with so much bureaucracy, it was unbelievable. They were too frightened to actually even start doing it. You needed two men, you needed signage, you needed everything. All we wanted was a little bit of work carried out within our communities. And I do believe that it does mean a lot to our communities to keep them clean and tidy, make sure the water is flowing down into the gullies, making sure our gullies are clean, making sure the weeds, the roadsides are kept to a standard. And I'll go back to the erosion of the land. I spoke today about this within our group session. You know, I mean, the amount of silt, the amount of debris going down our main arteries. I had a meeting with a resident not very long ago, referenced the River Clidock, and it was really difficult to find out who was responsible for this. They called it a vein. We have the River Usk, and we have our main, let's call arteries, but all the other rivers running into them, they call them veins. They say they're not responsible for them. They're not responsible for the trees off public or off Welsh Government land falling into the river, causing erosion. They said they're not responsible. So who is responsible for them? Who's responsible when the trees are in there and it erodes the bank away during heavy storms? The erosion is unbelievable. I was late today because actually I've got a serious problem with the river by me, washing and eroding the bank. And I've been there 36 years, I've never seen it as bad as that. And that's because a tree has come down, and actually it's washing away the side of the bank. The rivers need looking at. I don't know how we're going to do it, I don't know how the Welsh Government are going to carry out a maintenance on some of these main arteries, but they need to be looked at, because we need to get the water off our roads, away from people's properties and away from the concerns that people have. It can work, and I think we can do our bit. The other mile, I will finish up with, don't forget, we have a corporate responsibility. And there was a few deaths not very long ago on a main road, and I won't say where it was, and it was due to water lying on that road, and the car crashed because it hit the water, no lights, it hit that water, there was fatalities there. And it's not very far from Abegwenne, and we'll all know where it is now. And I do believe that actually we have a duty and responsibility as a council. There's a corporate responsibility for us to make sure we keep our roads safe. Thank you, Chair. So I will be supporting the amendment.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Bond.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to say I support this amendment, as we need to look further than just blame maintenance. Councillor Mayby said, we need to look at what changes in behaviour and processes we need to do to protect our residents for the longer term. We need to think and act differently, as the impact of climate change will get worse. As Councillor Chandler said, we also need to reduce fossil fuel use, as that has an impact. The amendment, the second bullet point, encourages us to look in that broader way to what we can do. So also with reference to councillors Butler and Neil, the third bullet point actually includes the need to look at maintenance, a review of maintenance. And with respect to Councillor Howarth and some of the, as has been said, we also need to look at what we are doing to the environment, for example, how we're reducing the use of chemicals, harmful chemicals, for curbside growth and whatever, and we need to look about what we can do as residents to help that. And also, as Councillor Mayby says, the sponge effect, the fact that we've got so much surface water running off is because we're not retaining it in the land, in the earth, as was said. So I support this motion, because it's bigger than just, brilliant though it is, Councillor Butler, it's bigger than just what you've said there. We need to think wider and broader. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Brown.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to say a big thank you to the officers for all their hard work in this emergency, planning over the storm. You know, it must have been very long hours that they spent on it. I do oppose this amendment, and the reason I oppose it is, you know, simply because I've got a very practical example of this. You know, for example, on the 17th of October, I reported to the, my Monmouthshire app and an email, basically that a culvert was blocked in a brook, in Mountain Brook. And, you know, I then also, because I didn't get any response back on this culvert being unblocked, I then sent a further request on the 30th of October, and again, no response. And then I then sent on the 4th of December, please can you update me on when this culvert will be cleared? As predicted on the 30th of October, the next heavy rainfall flooded the road, and this has happened again with the recent heavy rainfall. So in other words, because this culvert, which was reported on the 17th of October, wasn't actually unblocked, it meant that the road flooded again, and the road was closed, and there was a road close sign and a flood sign as well. This was predicted, you know, and this was really about not maintaining the drainage infrastructure to do with a culvert. And it basically, last time it meant that the farmer had to move the cattle off there. It flooded the field because the brook was blocked, and it flooded the side road by Mountain Brook Lodge, and there is also a sewage pump station there. So this was all predicted. So in many senses, when the council is alerted to issues like this and they don't respond, and I appreciate that there's difficulty often with resources on this, it does actually mean that the council emergencies respond actually ends up with greater resources, because it means that somebody's got to go out and put a road-blocked and flooded sign at the ends of this road. And, you know, this is just a practical example of why the original motion that Councillor Butler proposed is the one that we are, we should actually be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Butler.
Thank you, Chair. I don't support this amendment to the motion. The motions, the original motion is very sort of straightforward, and residents suffering from flooding in Langum and near Deverdon, the flooding was directly as a result of blocked culverts and drains. It's perfectly logical to say we need to think of how we make things better for our residents in a practical and immediate way. Responsibility lies with the council for council-maintained roads and verges, and for the householder. I can't blame anyone else, apart from my husband and myself, for not clearing drains behind our house, which meant our house flooded. Now, the reason it flooded is because there was an enormous amount of more rainfall than there has ever been before, but it doesn't negate the fact that I'm not blaming anyone else for it. And also, during this winter, we need to have a system where we can actually help mitigate the effects of the flooding. So let's please consider this. In Lantony, where I live, roads were closed, roads were flooded because of blocked drains and culverts. Now, council-owned land, trees were falling down like nine pins, and I'm not exaggerating, because they haven't been cleared as they should. We think that, you know, during the storm and during the aftermath, the services the council gave were brilliant. I can't recommend them highly enough or commend them highly enough, but we need to be much more proactive in the first instance. And this, you know, sort of swirling around climate change, I honestly think our residents think we have gone mad to think about solving climate change, when we could help by sorting out blocked culverts and drains. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor.
I'm sorry, I keep jumping one. Councillor Lucas, I didn't mean to miss you. Councillor Lucas.
No, it's okay. Thank you. I personally would like to say thank you very much to everybody that helped, my residents in particular, during the latest flooding. And I totally understand the reason why someone might want to amend the amendment, the motion, but it makes into a bigger picture, which of course, climate change is. This motion was purely designed to tackle what's here and now in Monmouthshire, and that is a big thing for our residents who are watching, we hope, and listening to us. I think everybody accepts, or at least I hope they do, that we have a climate emergency. And that's great, but the point of this motion was purely to design and ask that we need to focus on our maintenance ideas and things that we take for granted, and we shouldn't, and that's one of the issues. Now, I personally can give you an example immediately in my ward, where someone got flooded because of a drain, a culvert that was blocked, and she had to be rescued, they had to be rescued by the fire brigade. Now, the moment the fire brigade came and unblocked the drain, guess what? The water went away. This is a surprise. So, and by the way, her insurance company won't reinsure her until it's proven that it's been cleaned, or, yeah, the debris's been taken away from that culvert or drain. So it is hugely important that we understand what this motion is about, for me personally. Whilst we're talking about the flooding, though, it is a great shame for me and for my residents that unfortunately the Deputy First Minister of Wales visited my ward, went and saw the school and the schoolyard. went and saw the school and the schoolyard and thank you to councillor, the leader for attending, obviously. But, and yes, the schoolyard did get flooded, absolutely. And thank you very much to everybody that cleaned it afterwards. However, not 100 metres, not 100 metres, literally not 100 metres from that place they stood for their photo. There were a row of houses that were up to their knees all over in floodwater and they didn't visit them. I don't know about you, but I felt that was very disappointing. So there are many reasons why I will not support this motion. But that for me, the fact is simple, we are here to help our residents. I accept this is a climate emergency. I fully agree about planting trees and all the other motions and leaky dams. I could go verbatim on all that stuff. But this is about, let's do our maintenance, please. It's as simple as that. I will not, I will not support this amendment.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks for, for bringing the motion. I have to say, I, I, I want to agree with councillor Neil that actually, if you allow, if, if, if the, if the motion is left as it is and then you add the parts around climate change and the fact that there are other matters to attend to, then I think that would be perfectly fine. But it is important that our infrastructure is maintained. It isn't just the council that plays a role in maintaining that infrastructure across the county. Of course, there are other agencies involved, including, for example, Natural Resources Wales. And the last few weekends ago, I think I saw the difference that maintenance of infrastructure makes. And I think it is important and is important to our residents. So during Storm Burt, which, you know, I know brought devastation to, to many places, what I was seeing and what residents, most importantly, were seeing that was because since the flooding that we experienced in 2020, there has been a focus on improved repair and maintenance, both by the council and by Natural Resources Wales. Whilst we were all out looking at the level of the mill reen all day, what we saw was that the water was flowing a lot more freely. It was still flowing, it was very high, people were still concerned, they were out. But they were, they felt reassured. They felt reassured that there had been a real focus on the infrastructure. And I know that because I went and spoke to them. So I think that it's a shame that this, because one agrees that there's clearly exceptionally heavy rainfall, there are more climate events, so I certainly wouldn't negate anything that councillor Mayby said. But I would agree that actually the motion, the original motion really is, to my mind, should stand and the addition be made. And that is what I would be very keen to support. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Newell.
Thank you, Chair. A bit nervous, first time I've done this, but I will be opposing the amendment and my, for so many reasons why I'll be opposing the amendment. Can I associate myself, comments of councillor Taylor, councillor Lucas, councillor Neil as well? I'll sit down. The, we have a duty of care to our residents. The reason I became a county councillor five weeks ago is a duty of care to our residents. I'm passionate about the environment, we all want climate, there is a climate problem, we all want climate change. And the residents are buying into that as well with their residents, I've got a lady on the screen shaking her head at me. The residents are buying into this, we're not cutting the grass, Monmouth is a B town where I am. So the residents in my ward are encouraging all of this, that's a completely separate issue. My colleague's motion here has got nothing to do with climate change, we're all buying into that. This is about, my, my family and friends work for the county council, they were called up at midnight to go out and help with this flooding. I was sending videos to my county council colleague, Mr John here, of videos of water running down the side of my house. And my resident in, in my street asking, all they wanted is some help and they need to. This video showed a blocked culvert and the water streaming out there and causing a river down his main road. Mr Northridge, and I think Richard, councillor John has seen the emails. Mrs Millard at King's Fee, when I became a town councillor six months ago, said to me, Martin, these drains need unblocking. Mrs, Mrs Millard lives in the same estate as councillor Garrett, she was blocked in this week, she couldn't leave her house. Now, she's a nurse, she couldn't go about her duties because the drain was not blocked. We're all for putting plans in place for 10, 15 years to help the young people that were up here earlier. They were brilliant. But we also have a duty of care, and I also have a duty of care to my customers who cannot get buildings insurance. We're in a cost of living crisis, we're going to ask these people, I guess, for more council tax in a few months' time. The service levels are going down, they need to, preventative. My dad, who died four years ago, said prevention is better than the cure. Let's start preventing these and when the residents see that we're trying our best to prevent these, they will help us. But at the moment, residents just don't feel they're being helped enough. So I will be opposing this amendment and I thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to speak. And sorry if I rambled, I was a little bit nervous, my first time. And it is a huge privilege to be sat here in front of you and I don't take that privilege for granted. And thank you.
Thank you, the councillor. councillor Powell.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm afraid I can't go with this amendment either. I think we're getting away from the subject. Everybody is keen for the whole global business to get cured, but that's another thing. The matter at the moment is that regular maintenance of the roads, the drains and everything else. In my ward, there's a house there that the last time we had the floods, they actually had to be out of their house for three months while it was rebuilt because it was so bad. And yet again, the same thing nearly happened, only this time it just flooded their garage and the house behind had four inches of water throughout their house. And this is because the drains hadn't been unblocked. Now, it's a bit difficult because that road is a trunk road. So therefore, we're not sure who really is responsible, whether it's the Welsh Assembly, because so try notify them as well, or Monmouthshire, but that's beside the point. If those drains had been cleared out, none of that would have gone over there. And the, and the householder himself got in the night before and did his best to try and clear it, but he didn't have the equipment, obviously. So it was only a few bit, about that much downing that he managed to clear. If that had been cleared out after the last time, and I don't think it's been done at all, then this could have been prevented this second time. It's maintenance that is the important moment, all right? We'd like to, to prove that we can get rid of the global problem all round. Obviously, that is the main thing, but that is a very big thing. But the householders are more concerned with having the immediate flooding dealt with. And if drains and ditches and that aren't cleared out, they're not going to get rescued. So I'm sorry, but I can't go with this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Keir.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. I think this motion is designed clearly to look at lessons learned, all of us. We all appreciated the huge amount of work that took place, but we can always do better. And I think this is what this main motion is about. We all understand the issues relating to climate change and this council has made that position very, very clear as a whole. I just wanted to bring some examples of, that happened in my ward recently. And also the words of a lead officer who said on these matters in recent weeks, we are at breaking point. We can't do our job properly to the standards that we would like. And I think those comments we need to take cognizant, be cognizant of. And when we do look and, 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 and learn about that, we need to be talking to the officers about how we can do it better. So the examples, they were, the one pub, the Allway Inn regularly gets flooded and there now are flood prevention issues, barriers put in. But the initial flooding that took place, although it was ultimately overwhelmed by the highest level the Allway had ever reached, the initial flooding was caused by a blocked culvert. And it was flowing over the hedge into the pub. Ultimately, as I said, it got overwhelmed. The little jockey in Little Mill was flooded because of blocked drains. And I give a real life example also. Many of you may know that the Ask2 Killian Road, which borders the ward with councillor Bromfield does. And I paid tribute to the amazing hard work that she has done, particularly in the last week in sorting out residents with the, the electricity issues, et cetera. In 2023, that road by Hanley Court, former Savers Club, was flooded. Diversions were put in place. That cost the council to do that, no doubt. As a result of the joint work that we did, the council very kindly and ably uncovered, I think it was either 16 or 19 drains on the roads, surrounding roads that were causing the flooding. And there were no further issues. In October this year, prior to Storm Burt, that road flooded again. And there were more diversions and more inconvenience. Why? Those drains were blocked again. How do I know? Well, prior to Storm Burt, I went round and unblocked them myself. Storm Burt happened, there was no flooding on that road. So that is a prime example of what we're referring to about maintenance. And councillors may recall, earlier in this year, I brought a question to this council asking about the county council's proactivity on clearing drains in anticipation of this issue. And I was told, there's a huge amount of work going on, but as councillor Howarth said, it's clearly not enough machinery and manpower to do it because of budgets. And then another example, in Priory Gardens, was flooded for the first time since it was built, apart from the major flood in 1979, it was first built in 1969, due to the flooding of the Allway. Fine, the residents complained about blocked drains and the flood officers and we're very grateful for them going around and knocking on doors and asking about issues. The result, the drains got unblocked. That is what I'm saying. So there was an acceptance that the blocked drains may have had an issue and it was cleared after the event. And that is what the basis of this motion is, that we should be looking at proactivity, unblocking the drains, anticipating. But councillor Mayby, I remember challenged me when I raised that question some months ago. Of course, we cannot unblock every drain, I get that. But we do know, in all our wards, we do know where those hotspots are. It doesn't come as a surprise that the Allway floods. It doesn't come as a surprise that, you know, Hanley Court area gets floods. But it did come as a surprise that Priory Gardens got flooded. And I pay tribute to all the residents there who clubbed together with the town councillors as well to help out. So I can't support the amendment as proposed, but I can support it being added to the original motion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. and next to speak, councillor Gruckert.
Thank you, Chair. I speak from personal concern because the end of my garden, my boundary, is marked by one of the major streams that flows from the Sugarloaf Mountain down through the centre of Abigavenny. And over years has periodically flooded considerable areas of Abigavenny, but has been culverted. And you could imagine, I was keeping pretty eagle eye on the state of that brook during the whole of the day of Storm Burt. It maybe rose about half an inch because what was in place to alleviate that amount of water coming down off the mountain did its job. That evening, after the whole day of rain, if you remember, it was a great honour to be asked to go to Abigavenny Leisure Centre, which is in my ward, which was the centre to which the people evacuated from Skenfritz and Rockfield were initially taken. I was collected by the leader of the council, who drove me rather foolhardly in her car. And in the two, three hundred yards from where I lived to the leisure centre, we went through two fairly deep floods on the road. Mary Anne battled through magnificently and, and we got there. And it was a pleasure to talk to the people who'd been evacuated, who hadn't got a clue where they were. They were from London on the whole, though interestingly, no residents of those two communities because they knew where to go. So they were visitors who were there. They talked about the rivers. They talked about the huge amount of rain and the level of the streams and the rivers. So it seems to me, from my personal experience, that when we're talking about what happened then, it was the weight of water on the river systems that were the primary cause of flooding, not individual drains and individual culverts. And when I walked home after the rain had stopped, the roads were clear. The floods that were there when we went to the leisure centre had drained away because the drains were working. So it was not the drains and the culverts, from my experience. It was the weight of rain and that is not in the hands of this council, I'm afraid.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Griffiths.
Thanks very much, Chair. I've heard references to the fact that our council staff are at breaking points. I've heard the claim that we should be more proactive rather than reactive. I've heard the suggestion that we should wind time back to when we had clearing teams working up and down the country. So much of this debate, as it appears to me, seems to want not to acknowledge the economic history of the last 15 years. In those 15 years, the relevant parts of the public sector, people working for the council other than in social care or education, the people working for the Environment Agency in England, NRW in Wales, those budgets, the budgets that relate to the programmes we're talking about have been systematically cut by 60%. That didn't happen in the last year, it's happened over the last 15 years. And yet we're saying, why can't they do what they were doing 15, 20 years ago? And the answer is simply because the staff and the resources have been stripped out. There was an economic crash in 2008, caused by an excess of private debt and deregulation. The response of the government in 2010 was to willfully rewrite that history and say the problem was too much public expenditure. They were wrong. It was an ideologically motivated determination to restrict the scale of the state. And the result of that ideological mission is what we have faced in the last few weeks when we find that we do no longer have teams of people who systematically maintain our infrastructure. And we live with the consequences of that. The answer will be to rebuild our programmes of public expenditure. And as we do so, the private sector will respond and it'll take time and there will be growth in the economy. But as those programmes and as the scope for those programmes reemerges, they will be different. And this is the point, I think, of Catherine Mayby's, councillor Mayby's amendment. It will no longer be enough to simply put drain upon drain. We will have to control the flow of water, we will have to change the nature of our landscape, we will need to have more wooded areas, we will need to maintain, as people have said, the sponge effect of natural landscapes. And we will need to invest in that alongside the maintenance of the existing infrastructure. But that will require and is require that we undo the ideological mission of the age of austerity.
Thank you. councillor Howells.
Thank you, Chair. Like other councillors, I was involved with residents, offering help wherever I could and signed postings on social media, contact numbers, et cetera, for where help was available. And I thank officers and staff for their support during these times. I agree that much needs to be done to slow down the impact upstream to reduce our risks of flooding. Two years ago, I attended a presentation from volunteers in Hebden Bridge where we were shown the work these volunteers were doing to create leaky dams and other initiatives to slow to slow down water flow. The presentation inspired me to write my own article on slowing the flow, which I shared locally, which gave suggestions of what individuals can do to reduce their impact on flooding. It showed simple and obvious interventions, such as during heavy rainfall and the likelihood of flooding, individuals can reduce their own water consumption, anything thinking before you turn on the tap, any action that we can do to minimise the flow of water in our drains and rivers would help. The article suggested, for anyone wanting a bigger project, to lawn over an old paved patio area, or fit a water butt, or install a living roof on an old outbuilding, plant a tree, or just add a few planters to the driveway. Whether it's remodelling a garden or just turning a tap off sooner than you normally would during heavy rainfall, they will all contribute to slowing the flow and lower the risk of flooding. We're witnessing more extreme weather conditions, so I welcome the good work that is being done by our planning authorities to ensure new developments must adhere to sustainable drainage systems. We heard earlier, prevention is better than cure, and I support that. I support this amendment, as I feel the work needs to be done to prevent the water reaching the drains in the first place, which contributes also to the pollution entering our waterways. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Easton.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Well, I've been honest, councillor, 2008, as a few of us have here, and all I've seen since 2008 is cutbacks because of the economic situation created in 2006, '07 and '08, as councillor Griffiths alludes to. So this amendment is important. I can't support the original motion, because I feel that all we're doing is kicking the people who've been trying to work hard over the last number of years with dwindling numbers, as I see in my ward, as difficult areas that need dealing with, not flooding. So I support the amendment, and I believe that it's the best way forward.
Thank you, councillor. I don't see your hands up. The rules of this debate is now that the proposer of the original motion has right of reply to this debate about the amendment.
Okay, thank you, Chair. And actually, I do thank councillor Mayby for what she said, because what she's actually doing is adding to this motion, she's looking at the much bigger picture. And that's what I think should happen, I think we should add to this motion. But I don't believe we should take away point two, because for me, and I think it's been said by a number of people in this room, it's about our residents at the end of the day, and what they think. They're very concerned about the lack of maintenance that they see of their drains and localised flooding events that often occur after flash storms. And I know in my own village that, you know, some of the major issues we've had have been outside the storm season, they've been in the summer or late autumn, when we've had a thunderstorm. These are the things that have caused problems, and they have most definitely been because of blocked drains. So I do, you know, I accept the wider picture, I'm quite happy if councillor Mayby wants to add it in, but I don't feel that I'm very happy about taking out the part that this is really all about. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. So two things, we will be moving to vote on whether this amendment is accepted or not, so I could ask to get that vote ready. Just in advance of that, there have been two different suggestions of other amendments, so that would follow after this, so we can't discuss this inside this debate. So we're now going to devote on accepting the amendment as proposed. Scroll down. There it is. Oh, it's bouncing again.
Point of order, Chair, it says we're voting on the motion rather than the amendment.
Oh, sorry, yes. Are we all? In favour of the amended motion? Yes, we should be. I think we are, I think we are all clear, we are voting on whether to accept the amendment. I think that's clear. So whatever happens after that, we will be debating the motion, however it stands. So I don't propose we reconfigure this, I think we know what we're voting for. No, it's not, it's wrong. We're going to have to go for it.
Point of order, Chair. A point of order, Chair, is to do with attendance within this motion. I understand that two members left the meeting during the motion. Could we, well, councillor Webb and councillor Thomas. Sorry, councillor Thomas Davis. Sorry, councillor Davis.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Sorry, councillor Powell, very quickly, please.
Yes, I was a bit surprised that before, we'd been 38 or 37 or 30 something voters, and now all of a sudden, we've got 42 voters. Where they all come from?
Thank you for the observation. I'm going to answer the first, the first point made by councillor Easton. The, I'm aware, I think councillor Davis, I'm certainly aware, had literally had to go and reach for a cable to plug into his computer and notified me of that, and I'm satisfied that he was there. I'm satisfied that both councillors in question were there for quite sufficient amount of time to get the, to understand the debate, so I'm not going to rule them unable to vote.
Can we ensure that that is applied in future then?
I have applied that in the past.
In the future, I mean. We've got a precedent here.
Thank you, that is my decision, councillor Easton. Yes, we've checked the numbers, and that does add up, councillor Powell. Thank you. So we, we have got exactly 50/50 split vote, which would lead me to cast a casting vote. However, because it is so close, we have to go to a recorded vote. So we'll set that up, please.
You okay for me to proceed here?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Okay, this is an amendment on the motion. So, Castlebond, how are you voting?
Voting for the, no, in favour of the amended motion.
Sorry? Right, okay. Apologies, we're voting on the amendment. So you're in favour of it, councillor Bond?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Brocklesby?
In favour of the amendment.
Councillor Brown?
Against the amended motion.
Councillor Bryn?
Against.
Councillor Butler?
Against.
Councillor Birch?
For the amendment.
Councillor Butler?
Against the amendment.
Councillor Callard?
For the amendment.
Councillor Chandler?
For the amendment.
Councillor Crook?
For the amendment.
Councillor Davis?
Against.
Councillor Easton?
For the amendment.
Councillor Edwards?
Against the amended motion.
Councillor Newell?
Against.
Councillor Garrett?
In favour of the amended motion.
Councillor Garrett?
Can I, sorry, I just need to, I'm sorry. I just need to be very clear, I want to be absolutely clear, we are voting in favour or against an amendment. The motion will be debated later, and I just want to be absolutely sure that everyone is clear. I know they're reading off the slightly mistaken title in the app, but I just want to be absolutely certain that you're all clear, that we are voting for or against accepting an amendment. So you're either for or against an amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Garrett?
I am and was clear, and I am voting for the amendment.
Councillor Griffiths?
For the amendments.
Councillor Gruckert?
For.
Councillor Howarth?
Against.
Councillor Howells?
For the amendment.
Councillor John?
Against.
Councillor David Jones?
Against the amendment.
Councillor Penny Jones?
Against the amendment.
Councillor Keir?
Against the amendment.
Councillor Lane?
Against the amendment.
Councillor Lucas?
Against the amendment.
Councillor Mayby?
For the amendment.
Councillor McConnell?
For.
Councillor McKenna?
Against.
Councillor Murphy?
Against.
Councillor Neil?
Against.
Councillor Pavia?
Against.
Councillor Powell?
Against.
Councillor Rook?
For the amendment.
Councillor Sandals?
For the amendment.
Councillor Jackie Strong?
For the amendment.
Councillor Peter Strong?
For the amendment.
Councillor Taylor?
Against.
Councillor Thomas?
For the amendment.
Councillor Watts?
For the amendment.
Councillor Webb?
Against.
Councillor Wright?
For.
Is that four?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello, that recorded vote confirms the electronically cast vote, which leaves me in the position to cast my casting vote, which I cast for the amendment. Thank you. So we are now in a position to move on to, to debate the amended motion. Just to be clear, I'm going to, so I'll start, I'll ask for, I'll ask for a new list of people with their hands up to be posted, people who wish to speak to be posted. The, at the, so that's, that motion has already been put, so I'm just waiting now for a list of hands up. Thank you. Can I ask councillor Mayby? Oh, councillor Mayby, I'm very sorry, I'm being reminded of constitution. You've had your, you've had your opportunity to speak, I'm afraid.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I was going to be proposing the amended motion.
No, you effectively already have. Councillor Neil?
Thank you, Chair. It's just to remind you of the proposed further amendment that I made some time ago, which I would be dropping into the chat just now. And it's really to incorporate the additional point about other mitigations into bullet two of the original motion. So it would read, as I've expressed it in, in the, in the chat, that it would only affect the original motion bullet two, and it would incorporate councillor Mayby's point about other mitigations. It does not make any reference to the funding for any additional work required by Monmouthshire County Council, but it does establish the very important point, that the council has responsibilities, and that it's not to broaden the argument to issues around climate change.
Sorry, can I just interrupt, sorry, can I just interrupt you, councillor? You're proposing a further amendment. I do hope we get out of here before midnight. You're proposing a further amendment to this motion, so, and you are in the process now of proposing it, but I just want to be, everyone to be clear that that's what's happening.
So a point of order, Chair. Just for clarity's sake, does not the amendment that councillor Neil is proposing actually negate the vote that we've just taken? So I'm assuming that we've already actually effectively voted on this? So I would say it suggests this amendment is out of order?
Councillor Neil, could you just be very clear about what the proposed amendment you're suggesting is?
Certainly, I've put it into the chat, so hopefully it's there in black and white in front of everybody. And rather than rewrite the entire motion, I've referred you back to what was the original motion, and suggested, as I made the suggestion some time ago, that bullet two alone would be changed to incorporate the point about other mitigations that councillor Mayby has proposed.
Sorry, do you want to take words from the motion that we have, that we've now agreed?
So I could rewrite the entire motion all over again, but I'm referring back to the original motion for simplicity, where bullet point one and three would be unchanged, and only bullet point two would be changed, as I've proposed.
That would, I don't, I don't, I don't understand. What you're saying is, I just don't understand what you're saying.
Maybe, I think what councillor Neil is proposing...
Sorry, I think I can explain what I mean better than councillor.
Could you, could you write, sorry, could you write, could you write the full, could you write the full, your full proposed amendment into the chat, please? I think we're talking at cross purposes.
So, Chair, I have done that. The point really, for very straightforward simplicity, is bullet point one remains unchanged, bullet point three remains unchanged, and bullet point two would be as I've written it in black and white in the chat and dropped it in there about five minutes ago, with the additional point about other mitigations.
Councillor Neil, so I've taken advice and considered this, your proposed amendment actually negates the motion that we've just agreed, so it doesn't stand. So we will continue with debate on the amended motion. Thank you. So we will continue with debate on the amended motion. Thank you. And I would ask Richard John.
Thank you very much Chair.
councillor John, my apologies.
Thank you. I endorse the comments made by colleagues earlier on, so I will try not to repeat those. And I also won't be, I won't respond to the points that councillor Griffiths made in his politics lecture earlier on that weren't really to do with the motion. Well, I could talk to you for 10 minutes about Gordon Brown and the crash in the economy in 2008 and of course, all the things that the Labour Party have done in government in the last five months to completely decimate the confidence that was growing in the economy. But I'll try and focus my comments on the wording of the motion. Obviously, really grateful to all those who supported the efforts, not just officers, emergency services, other partners and volunteers, residents across the county for the work they've done to support each other in this period of challenge. But it's not just about, of course, colleagues have talked really passionately about the importance of maintenance. But there are also things that other partners need to be doing. So I can point you to areas of land just above Whitebrook in the Y Valley, where NRW have taken down acres and acres of trees and not replaced them. So you've got areas of lands that drained down into Whitebrook and in recent weeks, where we've had those storms, water has literally been pouring off those fields down onto the road. It's quite, it was quite a pothole road already, but it's obviously being made worse by the drainage situation there, where the road's getting waterlogged and then in current weather, the water's freezing and it's breaking up the road. So that maintenance is really important. But NRW could be helping by renewing the trees, by planting new trees on that land. It looks awful as it's been left. There are other things that the council should be doing to proactively maintain our drainage networks. And of course, we're not saying that this is some sort of silver bullet, but it is an important aspect that we need to be looking at. And I pay tribute to the work of the drainage teams. Councillor Newell referred to a situation in Penalt and the drainage team were out there earlier this week. And councillor McKenna and I were really grateful for their time, offering advice to residents about things they can do to help protect their properties. And I think we need to be doing more to offer residents advice about steps they can proactively take. But we also need to be, as an authority, taking proactive steps ourselves. In Penalt, the village hall committee are looking at what extra steps they can do. So they're looking at the possibility of storing sandbags at the village hall and setting up a group of volunteers to proactively inspect culverts and gullies, to identify problems that can be flagged up with the council, to prevent some of the worst excesses of flooding that we've seen recently. I was disappointed last weekend that the authority was not prepared to make available sandbags to businesses that were fearful about flooding. I spoke to, so councillor McKenna and I were talking to the landlords at the Somerset Arms, which was badly flooded in Storm Burt. And unfortunately, they were told by the council last weekend ahead of Storm Dara that they couldn't have sandbags specifically because they were a business. It's very clear in the floods risk management policy that we should be supporting businesses and residents. So I was really disappointed that they weren't able to get the support that they need, given that they pay business rates on that pub. They also pay council tax on the accommodation above, because of course, pubs more often than not are both businesses and residential properties. So that's something that really needs to be looked at, because businesses are the lifeblood of our economy, particularly in rural areas, where the pub is often the only community asset left, where we've lost shops and other facilities. So I really think, and perhaps when the administration brings forward its revised flood risk management policy, I know it went out to consultation towards the end of last year, I think it was, so quite why it's taken over a year for that policy to come back for us to review, I'm not sure. Perhaps the cabinet member can address that point. But that's something that really needs to be looked at, because we need to be doing all we can to protect our residents, but also protect our businesses as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor. councillor Bryn?
Can I just say that lack of maintenance of drainage infrastructure may not be the primary cause of flooding, but it can in certain cases exacerbate it. Would it be pertinent to share with the local members the programme of gully and drain clearance? As local members, we can ensure that funding and manpower are being targeted effectively, as we often know our areas best. And as I think it was councillor Keir said, we do know where the hotspots are. So a best place to advise and ensure that we are being proactive as well as reactive. I know in my own ward that there are two roads that if the drains are not cleared effectively and regularly, that it does cause quite extreme flooding on roads and prevents passing cars, where it basically forms a fold on Red Brook Road. So yeah, I'd like to see that happen if that's possible.
Thank you councillor. councillor Birch?
Thank you Chair. I'd like to speak about my spirits in Lambwena through the storms and to pay tribute and thanks to the people from the emergency services who rescue and also in terms of management of that flooding. I think the motion, I'm grateful for the colleagues bringing the motion forward, because I think we do need to be proactive as well as reactive in how we do things. We have to accept that these events are going to become more severe and more frequent and support our communities to both deal with them when they happen and anticipate and prepare and to slow the flow of the water. In Lambwena, the majority of flooding happens because of the rapid rise of the River Usk. And it is managed by the Lambwena Flood Fund, which takes the water round the corner so that it can rise slowly. The water that was coming through people's front doors or lapping at their front doors was coming from Brecon and the areas in between. It was coming from the rapid discharge of water from the hills into the Usk. But the water that was coming in through, lapping at their back doors, was coming from the Nantyago because of the blocked culvert from a private landlord, landowner. Somebody 20 years ago, I think, on two properties decided to culvert a stream, which has subsequently caused problems. We need the cooperation and collaboration of everybody, landowners who have streams passing through there, properties, riparian owners, the owners of ditches and those who simply perhaps have a driveway which discharges where it perhaps shouldn't. But ultimately, the clearing of whether we clear the ditches or not, and that is part of it, we're often only influencing who floods, rather than whether properties flood. You know, if the water transferred more quickly down the Usk from, and then perhaps from ditches, perhaps Lambwena wouldn't flood, but the water would hit Usk with greater force. We're often displacing a problem, rather than, I don't think we can cure it unfortunately.
Thank you councillor. councillor Davis, so inside the texting in the chat, councillor Davis has suggested an amendment which would... Sorry councillor Keir, I have to speak. I know, I'm just going to intervene, I'm just intervening. Bear with me councillor Keir. Councillor Davis has asked whether an amendment he's thinking of would pass muster. It certainly would stand as a, it's in order as an amendment. This has been a very long debate. The amendment, the amendment could be, I'm just going to suggest something, I think there's a lot more agreement in this room than might be obvious. Should the proposer of the amendment, which is councillor Butler? You are now, you're the proposer of the amended motion. You are the proposer of this motion, it's still yours. So should you accept, should this suggested amendment be made, you could accept it, which removes the need to debate whether we accept an amendment or not, and then we're going to continue onwards.
Chair, I move the question now be put.
That has to be seconded. Sorry, I'm sorry, I was asked a question and I've been spoken over, I'm very... councillor Garrick, just hold on please. So just to be clear, are you saying that I accept the amendment that councillor Mayby made? We've already debated that, yeah? So what are you asking me to accept here? So in the chat councillor, can I ask councillor Thomas to wave at me if he's considering proposing this?
Yeah Chair, yeah, very happy to jump in here. So what I'm proposing is that we honour the spirit and the letter of the amended motion and recognise the amendment successfully tabled and approved by councillor Mayby. But to bullet two, at the end of that sentence, added formulation of words which I've dropped into the chat, which I believe you've judged to be in order.
Yes, they would be in order as an amendment. My answer is that I'm happy, if councillor Mayby's happy, I'm happy. Councillor Mayby doesn't have to be happy, it's your motion. I'd like her to be happy, but it is your motion. Largely we are in agreement. It is your motion, so councillor Davis, I'm just going to move us along now. councillor Davis is proposing this amendment. Yes, so the motion, the amendment would mean that the motion reads, this council thanks the emergency workers, volunteers and all those who supported Monmouthshire residents during Storm Burt, recognises the increased frequency of severe weather events related to climate change and the need for many forms of intervention to mitigate the impact on our communities, brackets, including maintenance of the county's drainage infrastructure. Calls on the council to reassess its processes to mitigate flood events and evaluate the size and funding of the workforce dedicated to drainage, maintenance and environmental management. So councillor Davis is proposing that as a further amendment. Councillor Butler has suggested that she would find that acceptable. And councillor Garrick has suggested that we go straight to the vote on that now newly amended motion.
Yeah Chair, I actually requested that we go to the vote prior to that, that motion being amended. That was very clear.
It was difficult timing, because I was already in the middle of discussing that amendment with somebody else.
The councillor had not accepted that amendment when I requested.
I'm going to suggest that we go straight to the vote. Okay, I'm seeing nods all around the room.
Be clear on what we're voting on in that case.
Yes, the motion that I've just read out, I'll read it out again. Thanks to the emergency workers, volunteers and all those who supported Monmouthshire residents during Storm Burt, recognises the increased frequency of severe weather events related to climate change and the need for many forms of intervention to mitigate the impact on our communities, brackets, including maintenance of the county's drainage infrastructure, close brackets. Calls on the council to reassess its processes to mitigate flood events and evaluate the size and funding of the workforce dedicated to drainage, maintenance and environmental management. Thank you.
So Chair, I do need to ask why my request that the question now be put was ignored in favour of amending the motion.
I was, that was already being discussed with councillor Butler, so I've decided to go as I've just indicated. Thank you.
Chair, may I also raise a point of order? My community of Lanellen was blighted by flooding and I would have wished to speak and raise the concerns of my residents in this debate. I'm to be deprived as a result of councillor Garrick's manoeuvring here. Might you advise how I might raise the plight of my community before we put this vote to closure? Thank you.
I'm afraid that you have been denied the right, because we've agreed to move straight to the vote. Thank you.
Chair, one final point of order. Might the record show and clarify for the benefit of my residents that Labour members forced this to a premature vote and deprived members of those who were blinded by flooding the opportunity to raise grave?
Not a point of order, not a point of order. So we will go straight to the vote.
Chair, might we go for a comfort break after this, please?
Chair, can I suggest we could go for a massive comfort break when this meeting's finished? Sorry, Emma.
Yes, that, that motion is carried, thank you everybody. I'm going to call a break and I'm also going to hand, the next item of business is the second motion we have before us in which I've declared a prejudicial interest, so I'll be handing over to my colleague on my left. So back at twenty past?
Yeah, okay.
Back at twenty past, it's just over ten minutes.
Twenty past means twenty past, please. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if we could take a seat? Okay, we're slightly late. I was cognisant that some councillors who shared a protected characteristic under the Equality Act were, needed a little bit longer. So we move on then to point, eight point two, motion submitted by councillor Rachel Butler, councillor Butler. Sorry, is there a, is there a second for, is there a second for the motion?
Yeah, here we are, I'm seconding it.
Oh councillor Webb wants to speak, sorry.
Yes I do, sorry chair, I wish now to declare personal non-predatory interest in this next item please, thank you. I just wanted to make it clear before the debate starts, thank you.
Right, thank you councillor Webb, right, is there a second for the motion? We've got one councillor Powell, thank you, councillor Butler, sorry about that.
Thank you chair. I'd just like to read out the motion first so that people listening in and watching can, to know the full motion. This motion asks that this council greatly values the role of Mammothshire's farmers in producing high quality food, providing food security and acting as the guardians of our natural environment. Regrets the UK government's proposed changes to inheritance tax, specifically the removal of agricultural property relief, which threatens the future of family farms in Mammothshire. Agrees to work with local farming unions and other Welsh councils to persuade the UK government to protect our rural communities and not kill off family farms. Today, I urge all members of this council to support this motion and protect Mammothshire's family farms, a cornerstone of our heritage economy and environment. The proposed changes to inheritance tax announced in the 2024 autumn budget by Chancellor Rachel Reeves risk devastating our rural communities, penalising individual farms and opening the door for corporate entities to take over our countryside. The changes to agricultural property relief are particularly punitive because no other business relies on an asset like land, which is indispensable for farming. Land is not a luxury or a choice for farmers, it is the very foundation of their livelihood. Unlike other businesses where assets such as machinery or premises may vary in value based on profitability, farmland's high cost does not connect with the farmer's income or profitability. Farmers cannot choose to operate without land and its intrinsic value unfairly inflates inheritance tax liabilities, creating a burden disconnected from the reality of farming incomes. By capping APR, the Labour government's policy fails to acknowledge that the value of land reflects its necessity, not its profitability. For family-run farms in Mammothshire, the high cost of farmland is a reflection of limited supply and essential use rather than excessive wealth. Treating land as a taxable asset in the same way as discretionary business holdings places an undue burden on farming families, threatening the continuation of their vital role in food production and environmental stewardship. APR has played a vital role in enabling Welsh family farms to remain intact across generations, thereby ensuring food security, sustaining rural communities and advancing environmental stewardship. Under the inheritance tax announced in the 2024 autumn budget, agricultural property relief, APR, and business property relief, BPR, are captured a million for combined business and agricultural assets. Assets exceeding this threshold receive a reduced relief rate of 50%, effectively subjecting them to a 20% inheritance tax. The argument from the Labour government has been that it doesn't affect small family farms, so what is all the fuss about? That is just not the case. While this might seem as like a significant threshold at first glance, the reality on the ground tells a different story. The average farm in Mammothshire is 75 acres, which is much smaller than the national average of 200 acres, yet many are still valued over a million pounds when land, buildings and machinery included. Thirty-five years ago, a popular neighbouring hill farmer died suddenly of cancer, leaving his widow and 17-year-old son to carry on the family farm. Agricultural land values were at 200 pounds an acre. Now, they are around 10,000 pounds an acre for this hillland. His son took on the agricultural contracting business and he would like his son to take over from him. In the same instance, taking into account the value of land, machinery and buildings, his son would face an inheritance tax bill of at least 50,000 pounds. Remember also, if assets such as land have to be sold to pay the tax, then capital gains tax will be liable, effectively meaning it's not just a 20% tax, it's more like 30% to cover the CGT. So you would be looking at a liability of, say, 65,000 pounds, leaving a less viable size of farm. This is no small sum for a family that may already be struggling with the financial pressures of modern farming, working for less than their living wage. I cannot stress this enough, most farmers work for less than the minimum wage. These changes disproportionately target family farms. Farming families are central to Mammothshire's rural economy, providing local jobs, supporting schools and underpinning community services. The loss of family farms would destabilise our communities, damaging our rural way of life and weakening our rural hamlets and villages. The exemption of family farms from inheritance tax changes ensures continued support for food security, rural community stability and environmental sustainability. The Labour government's proposed changes to inheritance tax, particularly the removal of APR, jeopardises the future of family farms in Mammothshire and beyond. The betrayal and anger felt by farmers across the UK as seen by the countryside converging on London to march to Westminster and tell of their distress is palpable and heartfelt. I also call upon our MP Catherine Fuchs to look at the facts, not to continue to vote I also call upon our MP Catherine Fuchs to look at the facts, not to continue to vote against her farming constituents and protect farming families by lobbying the UK government to reconsider the proposed changes and preserve APR for family-run farms. Let's stand united with Mamashia's farming families, ensuring the preservation of our rural communities, the safeguarding of our environment and the continued legacy of local agriculture. Unlike corporate agricultural entities which have the resources and structures to absorb such costs, family-run farms are left vulnerable. This will lead to forced sales of land or assets to pay these taxes. This policy incentivises the very corporate takeover of farmland that many of us fear. This is not just an economic blow, it is an environmental and cultural tragedy. Mamashia's farmers do so much more than produce high-quality food. They are the stewards of our landscapes, managing biodiversity, preserving hedgerows and safeguarding ecosystems. Welsh family farms are essential for ensuring a resilient supply of locally-produced food, a critical issue in an increasingly uncertain global market. By targeting family farms with punitive tax policies, we risk losing these invaluable contributions. The soul of Mamashia, its family farms, its rural communities, its local traditions could be irreparably damaged. We must not stand idly by. This motion calls for action to work with local farming unions and other Welsh councils to lobby the UK government, to raise awareness of the devastating consequences of these proposals and to advocate for policies that preserve our rural heritage rather than destroy it. This is about fairness. Family farms should not be penalised for their essential contributions to society while corporate entities are effectively encouraged to monopolise our land. It is about food security. We must ensure that Mamashia continues to produce food locally and sustainably, reducing our dependence on volatile international markets. And it is about community. By protecting family farms, we are preserving a way of life that defines Mamashia and its people. I urge you all to support this motion and send a clear message to the UK government. Mamashia values its farmers and we must not allow policies that undermine their future and sacrifice our countryside for short-term revenue gains, thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Birch please.
Thank you Chair, and I'd like to thank councillor Buckler for bringing this motion. There is a great deal in this motion that I can only agree with, and I'm sure that we all do. The UK farming industry is struggling. We are reliant on imported food and young people are not going into the industry. 12,000 farms and agribusinesses have gone out of business in the UK since 2010 and farmland is being used as an investment vehicle, but many of the people working the land, as councillor Buckler has said, are really barely making a living. And as a result, food security is on our national risk map for the first time that most of us, perhaps excluding councillor Powell and councillor Easton, can remember. And farmers are right to remind us that no farmers know food. And when they're facing the impacts of Brexit and continuing uncertainty over farm subsidies, TB, supermarket contracts that squeeze out profit and give no security and the increasing impacts of climate change, it's completely understandable that farmers feel that this change of taxation is just the last straw because multi-generational family farms are the backbone of farming in Mamashia as they are in much of the UK. So, in terms of the last part of the motion, in taking over the rural affairs and food portfolio from the leader, I want to continue to work on a cross-party basis, recognising the collective expertise of colleagues in this chamber who run farm businesses and those who represent rural wards. Mamashia values our farmers. We've not sold off our tenanted farms, like many other councils, but instead are working with tenants to strengthen their businesses, become more sustainable and to sell locally. We run markets that showcase local produce. We're working to get more local produce into our school food. And we know that addressing the challenges of climate change means working with farmers and landowners, not least to reduce the impact of flooding. We've set up an on-party working group to monitor the delivery of our food strategy, which all councillors had a hand in creating. And new into the rural affairs portfolio, I'm very happy to commit to continuing the leaders' work in meeting regularly with the NFU and the FDW and working with neighbouring councils in Wales and cross-border to support our farming industry, including lobbying with them and to meeting Mamashia farmers. But I cannot support the second point on the changes to inheritance tax for two reasons. Firstly, raising taxes is never popular, but it is currently necessary to stabilise the public finances and rebuild public services because just like everyone else, farming families need a stable economy and services like roads and hospitals and schools. And the majority of agricultural property relief over the last few years has gone to the wealthiest landowners, an estimated 275 families in 2022 passing on 2 billion of assets free of tax. Secondly, the relief has helped drive up land prices with farms and farmhouse houses bought up by wealthy individuals as a tax break, an investment and often taken out of production. So if we want young people who weren't born into farming families to get a foothold in the industry, that tax loophole needs to be closed. There are a lot of figures being bandied about as to the impact of the change. I think the truth is that we don't yet know the impact in Wales as yet because it depends on the ownership structure of individual farms. But I know that many farming families are frightened of what it may mean for them. And I'm very glad that advice on tax planning and farm succession is being made available by the local NFU. But other countries have a fair and proportionate inheritance tax system and still keep family farms, and so should we. So that's why I'm proposing an amendment to the motion, which I hope the council can unite behind. To read, the, this council greatly values the role of Mamashia farmers in producing high-quality food, providing food security and acting as the guardians of our natural environment. We recognise that many farmers are facing a particularly difficult time as a result of the policies of previous Westminster governments, including Brexit, poorly negotiated trade deals and the failure to rein in the power of the supermarkets as well as global instability and the growing impacts of climate change. Acknowledges that the UK government's proposed tax changes to inheritance tax, specifically the limiting of agricultural property relief, are perceived as a threat to the future of family farms in Mamashia and agrees to work with local farming unions and other Welsh councils to protect our rural communities, supporting them to thrive and to sustain the intergenerational transfer of family farm businesses. Thank you.
Okay, have we got that on, have we got that on the chat? I think we need it, we certainly need it, and we need to know which bits of the original motion are being taken out for your bits to be put in.
My hands are shaking too much, put it down.
Okay, yeah, just bear with us a bit, the original motion and the amended version will be put side by side in the chat very, very shortly. Right, we'll give you a moment to digest that, it's just gone up now. Okay, I'm happy that's in order, so we will ask for a second there, please.
Happy to second that Chair.
Thank you councillor Buck. Okay, and we'll get the hands-up function going so that we can debate this amendment. Right, I've got councillor Thomas Davis, or yours councillor.
Thank you Chairman. Food matters for us in Mamashia, the food we eat, the food we produce, process and sell. Our land depends on it and our identity as a county is bound up with food and farming in our everyday lives, in our economy, tourism and in our hospitality sector. These aren't my words Chair, but the words of the leader of the authority in her own forward to the council's food strategy, which was approved earlier this year. And as we heard from councillor Buckler, all the evidence presented by the farming unions, by those who understand rural communities demonstrates that the Labour government's proposed reforms will decimate, utterly decimate the traditional Welsh family farm, compromising this nation's food security and the very fabric and character of this rural county. So I applaud councillor Buckler for bringing forward this important motion and for providing councillors this evening the opportunity to stand shoulder to shoulder with our farming community with a united voice. I cannot support the amendments tabled to the motion and I fear failure to support the original motion as drafted would simply make a mockery of this authority's professed support for our farmers and our rural communities and, dare I say it, further rot trust in our elected leaders. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you councillor and councillor Powell please.
That's it, pressed it twice, sorry. I'm coming out from a slightly different area. Many years ago, as families went on, the farmer, his son carried on, or a daughter as the case may be, and again, carried on through the family. If this goes ahead, the son or daughter won't be able to afford to just carry on. Many times, they had some pay off their father obviously, but they didn't have a very big salary because they wanted the farm to improve, so they let the money go back into the farm. So what's going to happen now, when it comes time for them to take over the farm, they're not going to be able to because they have to pay that tax, they probably even didn't got the money to pay it with. And what is the point? There is somebody there who's farmed all their life, side by side with their parents, knows what they're doing, is doing a darn good job producing food for us and then he's going to lose it because of paying this tax. I think it is wrong. Farmers work darn hard and they, all right, they're asset-rich, but they're money-poor because the farm's very valuable, but that doesn't feed you and put food on your table because you've got to get some money. And when we have all these things coming in abroad, we have to compete with their prices. Their goods aren't as good quality as ours obviously because ours is fresh and on a good farm. But I think this is very wrong, that they should try to tax them when they're changing the farm from father to son. And I definitely go against the amendment.
Thank you councillor Powell. Can I ask please that you do actually speak to the amendment, not to the general issue of the original motion? There'll be plenty of opportunity for that later on. Thank you. So councillor Penny Jones.
Well, thank you Chair. As a member of a rural ward and also part of a farming family, I support the original motion. And the reasons I do this, brought up by councillor Buckler. I am fed up with people telling me that farmers are rich and then as a snigger. The Royal Agricultural Benevolent Institution, the RABI, was set up to help farmers in need, farmers and their families, and it has never been busier. Farmers may be asset-rich, as just councillor Powell has just said, but a majority in Wales are not large landowners and do not have the surname Dyson and are mostly cash poor.
I'm sorry to interrupt you councillor, I'm struggling to see how you are speaking to the amendment rather than to the original motion.
I am in the way that I am supporting.
In a way, it's a bit tricky for me. Can you actually refer to the amendment, if possible, even by the wording in the amendment, thank you.
Okay, I am against the inheritance tax, obviously, because it's yet another nail in the coffin of farmers. But I also think that the amendment, to put it bluntly, is a party political broadcast. It is very political in its statement and I don't think it has any place in this debate. So that is my part to addressing the amendment. But I hope the original amendment is supported, the original, sorry, motion is supported by the council because it is so important.
You will have a chance to speak for the original motion later on.
Thank you.
Councillor McKenna.
I was going to speak on the original motion, so shall I wait till later?
Yes, yes please, and thank you for taking that into account, thank you, much appreciate that. Any other speakers to the amendment? I haven't got any more.
Chair, can I just make a point of order?
Certainly, you can try.
Well, yes, hopefully I'll do more than try. You say that people should only speak to the amendment, but surely by explaining why the amendment is the wrong way to go about it, the explanation is important. So I would say that, you know, that councillors should be able to say, to talk without being told no.
Certainly, I'm in the chair, thank you. Certainly, if they do that, I'm pretty happy to accept that. Explaining why the amendment is wrong is perfectly acceptable. Talking in general terms about why the original motion is right without pointing out how the amendment weakens that motion, that's where we run into problems, okay? I'm trying to be fair, but you hopefully see where I'm coming from.
Thank you Chair, well in that case, I'm sure that councillor McKenna is perfectly able to talk to the amendment as well.
Well, I think councillor McKenna can speak for herself actually on that. All right, councillor McKenna.
I don't support the amendment, so if you'd rather me wait, then I'll wait.
Yeah, thank you, I do appreciate that, you will get a good chance. Councillor Bond please.
Thank you Chair. I'd just like to say we really do value and support our farmers, absolutely, there's no doubt of that and when people are suggesting that we don't, we really appreciate what they do for us. And we understand, as just been mentioned, that Brexit has reduced support for them and the subsidies and the supermarket pricing has caused a lot of their issues and this, as they say, is just one thing on top of that, but those other things are going to be redressed from what I understand. And I cannot imagine their concerns regarding that loss of support from Brexit and the deals that have been done with other countries, I better not go into specifics. And I support the amended motion because that is the way forward for the country. But really support our farmers, thank you.
Okay, yes, supporting the amendment now. Councillor Brown.
Yes, thank you Chair, yeah, I do think the extra bit on recognising that many farmers are facing a particularly difficult time and then talking about Westminster government and Brexit and so forth, it does seem to be very much like a political statement that is really nothing to do with the current issue that farmers are facing in relation to the agricultural property relief. And it just seems as if, I mean, we had a lecture previously from councillor Griffiths, which was like a political statement. They don't seem to realise that the Welsh government is actually Labour and also there's a Labour council here and it has been for the last two years. I would hope that they would start putting forward amendments that are actually related to current issues, thank you.
Thank you councillor, and now councillor Jan Butler please.
Thank you Chairman. I can't support this amendment, I'm really sorry. I think because it seems to want to address farming policies probably from the last forty years and I don't think that's really relevant at the moment. I think the threat that our farmers are up against and what councillor Buckler's motion is about, is about the threat that our farming families are feeling and that threat is coming from our present government in the shape of the agricultural property relief. Sorry, sorry, wrong. Written the wrong thing. Sorry.
Take your time, no problem.
Sorry, inheritance tax was what I meant, sorry. Sorry, I looked at the wrong bit.
Was that scripted Chair? It's been a long afternoon. So you've got the right to reply to the amendment. I hear a point of order being suggested from councillor Watts, is it, or?
Apologies, it's councillor Dayes, but apologies, I thought councillor Butler had finished. I'll concede my speaking slot back to her.
Councillor Butler.
Thank you, chair. Councillor Birch speaks with great understanding of the difficulties suffered by our farmers in Monmashia, but cites large landowners as her motivation to put a highly politicised amendment to this motion. She cites previous things other governments have done, or not done, actually, I think some of them are erroneous, but it's about the here and now, and all those farmers who marched to Westminster, all those farmers who took their tractors and drove down Whitehall, they don't agree with you, councillor Birch. I have great respect for a lot of your views, I think you're very considered, but I think you're completely wrong about this. And I'm standing with our farmers and rural communities, and I'm standing with the people who marched to London, and I find it extraordinary that you can't see that that's what we're trying to do here, so I will certainly not be voting for the amendment.
Right, thank you. Commander Lee brief speeches on that amendment. So we can move now to a vote, we just wait for the function to go up. So this is a vote on the amendment as proposed by councillor Birch. Is everybody content that they voted? Yeah? Okay, well, it's 21 in favour, 17 against, is that a big enough margin to accept? Shall we, should we, point of order, chair, should we have a recorded vote, just to be sure? Well, I think it's, I don't think you could do that on a margin of four, you could have done it beforehand, before the vote was taken. Okay, all right, so that amendment is carried, we now move on to debate on the substantive motion as amended, so the hands up function will appear very shortly, I'm sure.
Chair, as not amended.
Yes, it's a substantive motion as amended, yes.
Just to propose another amendment, if I may, if we were to accept the amendment that's been carried, which references political uncertainty from Brexit and the Westminster government, it only seems appropriate that the motion should also have due regard for the anguish caused by the Welsh government's own reforms to its approach to managing farm subsidies here in Wales, which has caused an awful lot of distress to farmers in length and breadth of Wales. So it seems very fair, seeing as it's the spirit of, season of goodwill, chair, that we perhaps should reference the Welsh government's own failings as well. So I proposed a form of words there that we may want to consider in the interest of cross-party collaboration. Thank you, chair.
Okay, are you giving us that form of words? I assume you just want to add something to the first bullet point within the-
Yeah, so I dropped in the chat, so if we're to, I've added in that bracket at the end of that bullet, some language which reflects and recognises some of the dynamics closer to home that this council and this authority will do well to reflect on in the course of this debate.
Yeah, that amendment is certainly in order, do we have a second for it? Councillor Lucas, second it, right, so that's open to discussion, debate. I haven't got any hands, so it looks like we can go, yep, right, I'm going to go to-
Chair, sorry, chair, can I forgive my confusion here? In the last motion was amended, I think in a similar fashion in terms of how it was done, and you, the previous chair, asked councillor Butler whether or not she accepted it, and then we didn't go on to, it was just accepted and we didn't go on to vote or debate it. Now we appear, from what you're saying, we now go to debate it, so we seem to, for me, and please clarify it, to have a different procedure.
Yeah, this was discussed in some detail before the meeting about procedure with amendments. I was advised, and I'm sure we'll confirm, that there is no requirement to ask if the mover of the original motion accepts the amendment. I know the previous chair used her discretion to do that, yeah, but I'm acting on the advice that I was given. I can see the logic behind what you're saying, but-
It seems an inconsistent approach therefore, you know, we've got two chairs in it, and it seems unfair in that regard to have two different rules for two different motions.
Okay, well, it's a question of chair's discretion. I'm perfectly happy to ask the chair, if, sorry, to ask councillor, I'm losing it now, councillor Butler, if she accepts the motion, but it's, in my mind, it's still the, accept the amendment, it's still the property of the floor, really, once it's been moved, and so if people wish to debate it, they can debate it. Well, that's if we are all happy with the amendment, the amendment here, yeah. There's nobody asking to speak, so I'm going to take it to a vote, yeah, so those, this will be in favour of the additional words added by councillor Thomas Davies into the, into the bullet point that you see in front of you. Right, we're just waiting on a hands up function.
Sorry, chair, point of order, please, I'm just confused now because councillor Birch has just put up her hand, but it was late because you then already said that we're going to a vote, is that right? Are we going to a vote now?
Can I go to the vote? Yeah, I think we've already done that, we put hands up function, I do apologise councillor Birch, I didn't see your, I'm going to move to the vote, okay?
Could I just clarify, chair, is this, this is the second amendment, basically, that we're voting on, to include the second amendment, which is in brackets, this, as well as continued uncertainty from the WG's own reforms, could, I mean, I think obviously we'd rather have Welsh governments than WGs, but it's just so that people know exactly what voting on, thanks.
Yes, that's my understanding, I'll just get the monitoring officer to clarify that.
Just so we all know, so all members know what they're voting on, I think it would be sensible if we scrap the existing poll, let's say, and then start again and ask for the, really? All right, okay, just so everybody knows what they're voting on, I think it's sensible to scrap the existing polls, and there's actually word incorrectly anyway, and put the motion that members are voting on, just to be clear, it's the amendment subject to the second amendment proposed by councillor Davies. So I put the wording, or Richard, rather, will put the wording of the motion that you're now voting on into the chat, so just bear with us a few seconds to do that.
Chair, is a point of order, is an amendment to the amendment, yeah?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Thank you.
So we're voting on the amendment to the amendment, it's as councillor Brown stated it, actually.
Chair, can we have the voting back up then, please, because we've just, all just voted.
Councillors, if you just, just be patient, just for a moment whilst we get the vote put back up on the chat. Thank you.
I think we're just trying to make it clear that everybody's aware of what they're voting Okay, so you can see the motion as amended, but we're only voting on the amendment at the moment, and that's the bit that's in brackets at the end of the first bullet point, sorry, the second bullet point, bullet point that begins recognises that many farmers, so if you want that in, you vote for the amendment, if you want that's not in, then you vote against the amendment. I think that's clear. I'm trying to vote myself now.
Chair, we can have a name vote on this, please.
No, we've already started the vote, sorry. If you want a name vote on the final substantive motion, you can do so if you ask in time. Well, that amendment is clearly passed then, so we're back now to the substantive motion, which is, oh, my screen just, sorry, sorry, but the substantive motion is, as was just put up, on the, on a chat with the bit in brackets included, yeah, so we can debate now the substantive motion. I can't see, I've lost the hands up function on my screen for a moment.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, just coming up now. And councillor Butler, you will get the right to reply at the end because it's still your motion, don't let me forget. Right, now's your big chance. Looks like people are prepared to take it as is and move to a vote, is that fair? I see nodding from that side, no, no, I'm under the hand, sorry. Councillor McKenna, we promised you, didn't we? Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, chair, I appreciate that. Being a very rural, in a very rural ward, I'd like to speak on behalf of the residents in the ward of Mitchell Troy and Tralock United. My colleague, Richard John, and I have spent the last couple of weeks going around the communities and also spent time at Monmashia livestock market, speaking to the farmers and ensuring that their voices are heard. I rise today to support councillor Butler's original motion, which speaks to an issue at the heart of our rural communities. I cannot support the amended motion, which states, recognises that many farmers are facing a particularly difficult time as a result of the policies of previous Westminster governments, including Brexit, poorly negotiated trade deals and the failure to rein in the power of the supermarkets. As councillor Butler has stated, we are talking about the here and now and the future, not the past. I will start by talking about some figures and basic maths, the figures of which may vary slightly depending on where sources are obtained from. As we are all aware, Monmashia is a rural county with around 80% of its land area used for farming. In 2021, there were approximately 1,700 farm holdings recorded across Monmashia. Monmashia has good quality agricultural land, which ranges from £10,000 to £15,000 per acre. Monmashia's average farm is around 118 acres, which is similar to that of the rest of Wales. Some basic maths therefore tells us that if we went for the lower figure of £10,000 per acre, the average farm here in the county would be worth 1.18 million. If we calculate the higher figures, that would take the average farm in Monmashia to 1.77 million. Bearing in mind that those calculations are for the land alone and do not take into account farm buildings, equipment, machinery, livestock, other assets or the farmhouse, this proposal by the UK government would tip most farms in this county into the proposed tax threshold. Monmashia farmers are not just food producers of high quality food, they are guardians of our land, our environment and of our way of life. Being a farmer's daughter and growing up on a farm, I am proud that our county, Wales and the UK produce some of the most high quality nutritious food in the world. But now, that way of life and food supply chain is under threat from the proposed removal of agricultural property relief under the UK government's inheritance tax reforms. Let me be clear, this council must stand with our farmers. To date, we have no meaningful consultation with farmers that has taken place. Ministers may have spoken to the National Farmers' Union, but their pleas have fallen on deaf ears. Somehow Westminster seems to think it knows the farming industry better than the farmers themselves. Well, I invite Rachel Reeves and other decision makers to Monmashia, let her pull on a pair of wellies, spend a day feeding livestock at dawn, milking until dusk and out in the lambing shed at 2am, and then see if she still claims that farmers, some of the hardest working people in this country, will be unaffected by these changes. Personally, and I don't just speak on behalf of myself, but also my residents and the farmers within my community, we felt insulted by her comments in her recent budget that said hardworking people would not be affected, and her comments that said working people are strivers who graft. If a farmer isn't one of the hardest working people I know, then I don't know who is. I know firsthand what farming means, I grew up on a farm with farming dating back over 300 years in my family. My childhood memories include three o'clock in the morning lamming, missing Christmas mornings while my parents fed livestock, not being able to go on family holidays because we could not leave the animals to fend for themselves, and in more recent years, when I gave birth to my daughter, my parents' first grandchild, that they could not come and visit us in hospital because they had had a cow calving with twins. I learned early on that farming is not just a job, it is a way of life, it's relentless, it's 365 days a year with no sick pay, no annual leave, no bank holidays and no nine to five, Monday to Friday contract. It is very much a way of life and thus it should not be treated as any other industry- It is very much a way of life and thus it should not be treated as any other industry when it comes to taxation. Yet farmers do it because they are deeply committed to feeding our nation. But now, the UK government risks dismantling this proud tradition. These proposed inheritance tax changes will force families to sell off land to meet tax obligations, shrinking farms with each generation. Many farms have to provide a wage to more than one person and an increase in, a decrease in land will make these farms unsustainable. Without their land, farmers cannot farm. Imagine asking a doctor to work without surgery or a teacher without a classroom. A farmer without land is no farmer at all. And this impact ripples far beyond farmers themselves. Consider the vets, feed suppliers, hauliers companies, contractors, mechanics, auctioneers, accountants and butchers, the list goes on, all of whom will depend on the farming industry. These changes will undermine not just food security, but our rural economy as a whole. Farmers are reaching their breaking point. Protests are already happening across the country, just as we saw only yesterday when tractors blocked Whitehall. And the frustration is clear to see. Farmers are rightly upset that their voices are not being heard, as we have also seen with the uncertainty around TB and the sustainable farming scheme. If Westminster continues to ignore them, what's next? Could we see farmers blocking ports or withholding key products like milk to make their voices heard? Such drastic measures should not be necessary, but they may become unavoidable, as they have done across the water with our friends in Europe. If we had hysteria and panic buying over toilet rolls during the Covid pandemic and saw petrol pumps running dry when the war in Ukraine started, I can only imagine the bare shelves in the supermarkets. The government claims that only 500 farms a year will be affected. This is simply not true and I am baffled at how they have come to this figure. Over a 75 year generational span, even with this unrealistic figure, that equates to 37,500 farms, an enormous impact. And with the average price of agricultural land and assets already tipping most farms over the £1 million threshold, these changes will affect nearly every farmer in Monmashia. Chair, I urge every councillor here to listen to the farmers themselves. Take a trip to Monmashia livestock market next week, speak to them, hear their fears and frustrations. I challenge you to find even one farmer who won't be affected by these changes. So as we sit down to our Christmas dinners this year, let us pause and remember the farmers who made it possible. Their sacrifices, their hard work, their resilience. They don't need fanfare or applause, they just need fair treatment and the land they've worked for generations to sustain. I call on this council to support our farmers, to work with farming unions and other councils and to demand that Westminster protect our farmers and our communities. This is not about politics or about party loyalty, it is about doing what is right for our nation. Let us not allow family farms to become a relic of the past. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. I have councillor Sue Riley.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make one small point because twice it has been raised now that farmers might have to sell land to pay their inheritance tax debt if that is the case. I just wanted to say that obviously every farm, every valuation, every inheritance tax is going to be different and would need to be looked at individually. However, anybody paying inheritance tax is able to negotiate paying that inheritance tax over a 10 year period. I just wanted to make that point, so thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor. All right, any, oh, I got councillor Martin Newall now.
Thank you, Chair. If I could just answer councillor Riley's point, as well as being able to negotiate paying back over a 10 year period, a lot of families are going to have to raise, they're not cash rich, these families. So what someone's going to have to do is borrow money to pay this inheritance back. They won't want to sell their land. For every £100,000 worth of inheritance tax, these families have to have to raise. The interest on that at 8% is roughly £700 a month, that's just the interest. You times up by 12, that's £8,400 a year. Food prices are going to go up as a result because they have to get that money back or they're going to lose members of staff, which means that there's going to be extra tax going out on social security burdens. The bigger picture is here that families can raise the money to pay this inheritance tax, but it's going to cost them thousands and thousands, if not tens of thousands of pounds a year, which means that food prices will go up. We won't be able to buy our food here, we will then go for cheaper imports and exports from other countries, that's where we'll get our food for. But we don't want that because of course we want to help the environment. So it's a bit, little bit catch 22 from where I'm coming, but I just thought I'd put it out there, for every £100,000 that a farmer needs to borrow, it will be roughly £800 to £900 a month in interest.
Thank you councillor Lucas. Can we try to stick very closely to the actual wording of the motion as amended, please? Thank you.
If I could just come back on that, I was actually replying to councillor Riley's point about paying the money back. And just for clarity, I was actually letting the councillors know how much it actually costs per interest and that's without repaying any of the capital.
Yes, I accept that and I'm impressed by your mathematics as well. Councillor Lucas.
Thank you. Well, if anybody isn't impressed by what councillor McKenna has just said or understand what councillor McKenna has just said, I question you all straight away, I really do. You need to go and spend some time in our rural wards. And for the record, straight away, please, I want like a named vote. So I've said that one now in this correct time, I believe. But what councillor Newall has just said is correct. We will, yes, we'll get nine votes, don't worry. Councillor Newall has just raised a very valid point, which clearly we're all sidetracking, which is by taxing our farmers to that level, we are without a shadow of doubt cutting off our own throats at the same time. It's so logical, how could we not see that? It seems to me that we just don't get things. They are a vital part of our communities, they are a vital part, they don't see land as land only, as a part of their being, it is for future generations. Which takes me down to the Future Generations Act, but we seem to be forgetting about that. But hey, what would I know? I only live on smallholding. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor.
Thanks very much, Chair. I was proud to be supporting councillor Butler's original motion and I thank her for her factual and impassioned contribution. And I add councillor McKenna's impassioned contribution then firsthand. Monmashia, as we know, is a proud farming community and that cannot be more visibly shown than via ASK Show, the largest one day show in Wales, where 30,000 regularly turn out to see how farming is run here. Representing one of the more rural wards, I'm proud to be standing up for my farming constituents, as I have been saying I will do. My affinity with farming started via my late father, who was involved for nearly 55 years when working for agricultural agents Rennie Taylor and Till, which morphed into Rennie, which I'm sure my colleague councillor Powell will recall. He saw the finances of the, oversaw the finances of the weekly marts at Newport, Monmouth, Aberguveny and ASK, where my early childhood saw me introduced into farming. I saw then how hard farmers worked and working myself at Redhouse Farm in Mitchell Troy in my late teens, I experienced that tough farming life. 24/7, as councillor McKenna said, 365 days of the years, next to no days off. Christmas Day, feet up? Nope. I experienced what it was like to get up at 4.30 in the morning to milk 100 or so cows in every weather possible, no matter what. Rearing calves and lambs by hand, clearing out chicken sheds and winter storage sheds by hand, slurry clean up, straw and hay bale hauling, picking acres of potatoes by hand because the ground was too wet for machinery. Plowing, not very well, I might add, but nevertheless rolling and crop seeding. I'm very proud that the time of my time of my life then sits on my CV 40 years on. My time post this was part of an agricultural banking team around the foot and mouth outbreak and the devastation that caused. There were iconic lasting images then of burning pires, of cattle carcasses and deep pits for burials as alternatives. And now we've seen even more iconic recent images, the 5,000 wellies on the steps of the Seneth and the lines of tractors outside Whitehall and Parliament yesterday, as Welsh farmers in particular battled continuously on their assault, in my view of their industry, the FSS scheme, bovine TV, the complicated issues around the NVZ scheme, fertiliser costs, the climate change, as has been mentioned, affecting the weather and about labour shortages getting into the market. Who were helping out during the recent flooding and the fallen trees? And who will be there if we have snow? Farmers, for free and saving this council money. I can surely say that the farmers were not there in London yesterday to say thank you to the Westminster government for this proposal. On the political front, prior to the election, the now prime minister spoke at the NFU conference and said he had no plans for IHT and APR for the industry. The bombshell announcement, like those on winter fuel payments and NIC's changes for business, fails to recognise how farming has evolved over generation of generation. It fails to recognise the low levels of profitability and cash on families' farms. Yes, on paper asset rich, but cash fail, poor. And it fails to recognise that the average Welsh family farm are struggling. Viability wise, the farmers may either have to sell or borrow the money, as councillor Newall has said, making farming less viable and surely the decline of the industry. It is, in my view, both misguided and ill thought out, an easy government hit, one might think. And it is alarming, the disparity of numbers of farms who are going to be affected. There is a vast difference and that surely needs to be sorted. Remember, farmers will battle and they are used to being there for the long hauls. It is my view that farmers, and indeed our armed forces, have for me a covenant with the government that recognises the huge commitment they give beyond multiple other professionals, as I outlined. Of course, raising government income by taxes in whatever area, for whatever spending are of course political choices. On farming, in my view, this is simply wrong and as a party, we've already committed to reversing this policy. Why? Well, far from foundation building that we constantly hear about, this policy is undermining the future of farming and that cannot be right. Farmers are expressing their views constantly, as they did on winter fuel payments in the recent by-election, won by my good friend and now councillor Newall. Pensioner businesses and farmers have long memories. The disproportionate balance between farming votes and the benefit of the work to the other members of the electorate must never be forgotten and we won't forget that. As councillors, we should recognise this extraordinary commitment farmers make to produce affordable food that too many just take for granted as going to the supermarket. In supporting originally the original motion, I do believe that the council would show the support, as has been said, and the recognition of the extraordinary work and commitment that farmers bring and why this covenant should be protected. As councillor McKenna says, when on the morning of the 25th of December and we may be opening Christmas presents, many farmers will have already been up for hours milking and tending their animals. So whilst I was in favour of councillor Butler's original motion, as amended, as we've just heard, I'm afraid I can't support it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And councillor Penny Jones.
Thank you, Chair. Just a few words, I'm extremely disappointed at the way this debate has taken a political turn. We are here to support the farmers and as a farmer's wife for many years, I know all about the Christmas days and all the other days, the ups and downs and the lack of holidays. But it is a way of life and it is a way of life that when you're a farmer or live on a farm, you do love. So I'm here to support the farmers, not only in my ward, but everywhere, you know, all my political, all my farming friends, sorry, not political. This inheritance, that is why I supported councillor Butler's original motion and I'm afraid I can't now. We're battling, the farmers are battling with an inheritance tax, an unfair tax, which must be seen against a background of political, I can't get rid of that word now, sorry, of financial crisis and instability. And believe you me, the stress of financial worries cause must not be underestimated. It causes more suicides in farming than anywhere, anything else, young and old in Wales. And you've got to take this into consideration. If, I urge you, if you haven't already, to go to the livestock market. I go there regularly, as it's nearly in my ward and on the edge of it. And there you will find a wellbeing centre set up by an ex-vet. And he did it because he was so mortified by the depression and the mental health issues that farmers have and that weren't being addressed, due largely to financial problems. Now, that isn't only caused by the inheritance tax, I quite realise that, there are loads of other reasons. But the inheritance tax is the final nail in the coffin and we must not allow that to happen. So please go, visit the wellbeing centre, talk to them. They have lookouts throughout the market, going around, talking to people, just ordinary people who look as though they're, you know, bidding for sheep or whatever, just trying to make sure that they catch anybody who's extra despondent or depressed or withdrawn or whatever. That's how serious this problem is. So anything that helps the farmers from now on, we must support. And that is why, as I say, I supported the original motion, but I'm afraid I can't this one. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Chandler, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm speaking in favour of the motion as was proposed by councillor Butler and amended by councillors Birch and Davis, because I think combined, they create a motion that does reflect the challenges that are faced by our farming community. I represent one of the most rural communities wards in the county. And I see the breadth of the challenges that they face. But I don't think, but I think, sorry, let me just keep it there, I see those challenges and I think it's important for us that we recognise that breadth of challenges. So yes, we know the impact that Brexit has had and certainly, you know, speaking as a green, you know, our green party is probably the party that's at most at the forefront of wanting to close ties with Europe and to rejoin the customs union, get our country rejoin ready, because that is one of the ways that we're going to be able to support our farming industry to move forward. There are a whole range of other things. I certainly support what was in the motion about how we should be working with local farming unions, other Welsh councils and others to protect rural communities and support them to thrive. I think with regard to the inheritance tax issue, in principle, I think the question is, I am in principle in favour of removing some of the loopholes in inheritance tax, particularly for the billionaires who are buying up farms in order to go through tax avoidance is right. Has the UK government got the threshold right in terms of where it's set, that inheritance tax relief there? I don't know, I think that's still open for debate. We've had lots of different figures around here. Councillor Butler, in her original proposal, said the average farm in Monmashia was 75 acres, I'm surprised it was as small as that. That would give a family, an average family value of about £750,000, working on a £10,000 per acre thing, so that wouldn't fall within the inheritance tax threshold, quite apart from the others. I think the other thing is that recognising that difference between the genuine family farm, of which obviously, like most of us here, you know, we're from, my grandfather was a farmer, my father chose not to follow him in the farm, so my grandfather sold up because that was, that was the choice at the time. The genuine family farms, if they are going to hand it down... The genuine family farms, if they are going to hand it down, most of them would do that in a phased way. They won't wait until the farmer has died and then the children are suddenly think, oh God, we've got a farm. It's a much more gradual process than that and usually, as many of the farmers in my ward I'm aware of, is they hand over the farm to the child that wants to take the farm on and then as the parents, they then live on the farm in a bungalow while the child goes out. That avoids that tax, providing they live for another seven years, that avoids that tax. But someone, I think what it doesn't do is for those that actually see it as a business where they're not farmers, where they basically bought the farmers, attacked their shoulder and they never get their wellies muddy, they're the ones that are then worried about actually what's the impact of what's going to happen when they die because they're not handing over to their children. So in principle, I think it's, I'm in favour of it, in terms of the devil is always in the detail and I think that will thrash through in time and we'll see what the impacts are. But in terms of this motion, as amended, I think it's a good motion and I'm happy to support it because I support the farmers in my ward and I believe this motion reflects the challenges they face and reflects the reality of farmers in Monmouthshire and I think we should support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, I don't see any other hands, so councillor Butler, you've got the right to reply, then we'll move to a vote and I remember we want a recorded vote.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to start with an apology to you, actually, because it got so confusing at one point, I didn't know you were talking to me, so apologies, it was not being intentionally rude. Yes, and thank you for letting me have the right to reply. Oh, this is with such a heavy heart that I have to say I cannot support the amended motion. It's so important, the fact that the UK government, you know, following this ill-judged and ill-thought-out policy, they won't listen. They've told, with breathtaking arrogance, they're saying they won't listen. So this motion was to say, telling them that this is just unsustainable. And actually, councillor McKenna and rather slightly more pointedly councillor, I've gone blank, I'm very sorry. No. Chandler, apologies. It's a long, long day. So actually, my seventy-five acres actually is a typical hill farm, so apologies, because I know it's a hundred and twenty-eight acres, Wales-wide is the average size of a farm. And actually, my figures are right because it includes buildings, machinery and kit and all the rest of it, so just make that point. And I would say that, you know, saying, you know, not recognising the strength of feeling, and it's based on fact that ninety percent of farmers will be affected by this and that the UK government are turning around and saying they won't consider it again, that there was no consultation whatsoever. And have Rachel Reeves and Keir Starmer ever been Rural Affairs Ministers? No. And we're just saying, this is so incredibly important and I'm really sad to have to say I can't support this amended motion. But I hope people are listening because it's the most important thing for Monmouthshire, being a very rural county. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Now, in order to have a recorded vote, I need to see if at least nine of you want to stretch your legs. Or I will take hands up, yes, okay. Right, one, two, three. Hold them up, please, you're not bad exhausted. One, two, three. Yeah, we've got plenty there. We will have a recorded vote.
Thank you, members. Councillor Bond, how are you voting on the amended motion?
Okay, please can you explain, because I'm confused now, because if we voted, if we voted for the amendment, right, can you please explain? I'm voting again for the amended amendment.
Right, you are voting for the motion, as is on your chat, eighteen point two from James Williams, yeah, which basically was amended, the original motion was amended once with the amendment proposed by councillor Birch and then again with a more brief amendment, with a piece from councillor Davis, if I remember correctly, yeah. So it's there as you see it in front of you.
And that was then agreed for the amendment, the amendment was thirty-two, three, so okay, got it?
Yeah, okay.
So I'm voting for the amendment.
Thank you.
For the motion, you mean, for substantive motion? It's substantive motion you're voting for.
Yes.
Councillor John, behave yourself.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, I'm confused. Not the original motion, I'm confused, I'm completely confused, please explain.
I'm going to have to push you, councillor.
Right, am I voting for that? The statement is eighteen oh two.
Yes, you are.
Voting for that.
Yes, thank you. That was a four.
That's a four, yeah. Councillor Brocklesby.
I'm voting for the amended motion.
Councillor Brown.
Sorry, against.
Councillor Bryn.
For the amended amended motion.
Councillor Butler.
Against.
Councillor Birch.
For. And may I say that having accepted councillor Davis's amendment to the amendment, I'm disappointed that we cannot unite the chamber.
All I want you to say is for or against, that's all I need from anybody, that's all I would accept from anybody.
For, sorry.
Councillor Butler.
Against.
Councillor Callard.
For.
Councillor Chandler.
Yeah, for our farmers, for the amendment, for the motion, yeah.
Councillor Crook.
For.
Councillor Davis.
Against.
Councillor Eason.
For the amended amended motion.
Councillor Edwards.
Against the amended emotion, motion, sorry.
Councillor Newell.
Against.
Councillor Garrett.
For.
Councillor Garrick. Councillor Griffiths.
For.
Councillor Brockett.
For.
Councillor Howells.
For. Was it Howells or Howard, Howells?
Howells.
For.
Councillor John.
Against.
Councillor Penny Jones.
Against.
Councillor Keir.
Against.
Councillor Lane.
Against.
Councillor Lucas.
Against.
Councillor Mayby.
For.
Councillor McKenna.
Against.
Councillor Murphy.
Against.
Councillor Neil.
Against.
Councillor Pavia.
Against.
Councillor Powell.
Against.
Councillor Riley.
For.
Councillor Rook.
For.
Councillor Sandals.
For.
Councillor Jackie Strong.
For.
Councillor Peter Strong.
For.
Councillor Taylor.
Against.
Councillor Thomas.
For.
Councillor Watts.
For.
Councillor Webb.
Against.
And councillor Wright.
For.
Right, the amended motion is passed by twenty-one votes for to eighteen against. Right, thank you very much. I think we will take a break now. I appreciate that it's very, very late, a lot of councillors have a commitment of different sorts, so we will understand if they do need to leave at the time of the break. Hopefully others will stay and support those who are asking and answering questions if they possibly can. So it's, start again at ten two, everybody? Yep, okay, thank you very much. Happy, yeah, okay, thank you very much.
It's a sort of national administration charity by doing that.
I've got to go singing.
Yeah, well, enjoy it. Happy Christmas anyway.
Happy Christmas too, thanks for the call.
Oh, have you checked in your pigeonhole, Malcolm?
Yeah, I did.
All right, okay. Louise, your mic's on.
Can we have, it's 10.2 now, can I, it's been a very long day, can I ask everyone to be seated? In your seats, please. councillor Thomas has got better looking since I last looked at him. Okay, here we go, here we go, it's 10 to 7. It has been a very long day, we've got 16 questions, and if everyone uses up their full quota of time, that would take us four hours. So I'm going to, I'm going to request that you keep your questions and your answers succinct, that you don't, there should be questions and answers, not speeches, so I don't want people speechifying unnecessarily. So questions and answers, and let's be punchy and brisk about this. And I'm going to, I'm going to take the first two questions and then the last two, that's to facilitate a member who really does need to leave. So, question one is from councillor Stephen Garrett. Oh, sorry. Shall I read your question, councillor Garrett?
Yeah.
Yep. So councillor Garrett's question is to councillor Mayby, please can the cabinet member provide an update on the experimental prohibition of driving except for access on the section of Goldwell Lane in Monmouth from the junction with Somerset Road to the junction with Drybridge Street?
Thank you councillor Garrett. As councillors may recall, Goldwell Lane is a one-way street in Monmouth that loops round in a U shape from Cinderhill Street and back down to Drybridge Street. The arm of the loop that runs down to Drybridge Street has a narrow section at the end with narrow pavements, and this is the part that is now subject to the prohibition of driving except for access to the properties there. This is the only direct route for pedestrians into town, and it's used by children on their way to school, people with prams, mobility scooters, and elderly and frail people with walking frames or sticks. There are blocks of sheltered housing flats on Goldwell Lane, and it is residents of these flats who first approached us at our local drop-in session to ask for something to be done about the dangers they face from the car traffic using the road as a shortcut. More recently, 11 residents signed a letter to me reminding me about the use of this route with walking frames, and restating their request for the lane to be closed to through traffic. The route is popular with residents in town and over mono wards as far as the link road in Kingswood Gate, as it provides a walking and cycling route into town. The crucial point here is that there's a perfectly adequate and clearly marked alternative for cars via Somerset Road, so it's unnecessary for cars to use the lane as a shortcut, and it is dangerous in three ways: to people walking or wheeling along the lane, to people crossing the end of the lane at Drybridge Street where cars emerging block the crossing from pavement to pavement, and to traffic on Drybridge Street with cars emerging from an unexpected source with poor visibility close to the roundabout and impeding the flow of traffic on this street. There have been several near misses and minor accidents involving cars and other users. One example reported by the police was a collision where a disability scooter travelling along Drybridge past the Green Dragon got her front scooter wheels trapped under a car wheel as it exited the blind spot pulling out from Goldwell Lane. Another example came from one of our own councillors, councillor Bryn, who stepped behind a car waiting to exit the lane and blocking the crossing, only to be reversed into by the car. The prohibition order was delayed during Welsh Waterworks but was implemented on October the 25th. We have seen, however, that many drivers are ignoring this and continuing to use this shortcut, some of them at speed. I'm very concerned that by continuing to speak against it, councillors opposite may actually be encouraging drivers to continue to use the lane. This is against the law and it's presenting a real danger to vulnerable people. And for what? To save motorists a couple of minutes? People can die or suffer terrible injury because of dangerous driving and because of ignoring basic road safety rules, but also unless obviously their freedom is hugely curtailed because they don't feel safe to go out except when chauffeured by people with cars. If you're a child or an elderly frail person, on a mobility scooter or on a walking frame, or a partially sighted one like myself, the rules that constrain the behaviour of cars and drivers fundamentally affect your freedom to leave your home independently. So we must consider not only those who currently walk down this road, but the many more also who might use the route if it was really safe. I ask councillors to think about how it would benefit the wellbeing of people in Monmouth, including traffic congestion and air quality.
That's time, please.
If everyone who can walk or cycle to school or work did so. Instead of noisy, dirty, dangerous streets full of traffic, we could have the sound of people chatting and maybe even hear the birds singing. Anyone who's ever spent time in streets.
I'm sorry, this is your time, sorry councillor. Is there a supplementary?
Yes, please. Councillor Mayby, have you had any feedback from pedestrians like I have about the impact of the traffic order? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Garrett, yes. Colleagues in council will know that I do try to respond to challenges with facts and not with emotion or anger, but on this issue I admit to, I did actually weep when I read a letter from an elderly resident. We at Home Forge House give heartfelt thanks to you and the council for listening to us, the pedestrians who have to use mobility scooters and walkers to get to the shops in Monmouth. But since the access-only signs have been put in place, the motorists have been complaining. We did think the problem would have settled down after a week, but it's getting worse, and we now think the drivers are doing it on purpose. One lady who was nearly blind and has to use a walker was seen by someone else to have one car in front of her and three cars behind as she walked down the lane. There is even a little red car that regularly comes down, and if you're in the way, it revs the engine at you. I am 97 years old, and I'm afraid I've lost faith in the younger generation today. Councillors, I do try to look for the best in people, and I have to hold on to the hope that those who have not yet recognised the road safety significance of this prohibition will start to adjust to this new arrangement and comply for the sake of their community. I ask all councillors to support me and our road safety team in this, and not to undermine what we're trying to do. And I want to finish with a quote from Lord Alf Dubs, 'Our society will be judged on how we treat our most vulnerable.' Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And the next question is question number two from councillor Newell.
Thank you Chair. In light of the flooding on Wanster Road last month, when will the cabinet member abandon plans to partially close Goldwell Lane?
I believe that this has already broadly been answered to councillor Newell. The prohibition will be trialled for six months, after which we will assess the impact on traffic and whether further measures are needed to ensure the safety of all road users. Wanster Road and several other roads across the region were flooded temporarily on Sunday November 24th during Storm Burt. The previous occasion was on the 16th of February 2020. It's disappointing to see a catastrophic event like this misused in this way to campaign against road safety measures, particularly during the event itself, when teams are out helping those who are genuinely in distress. During an emergency event, the council works with emergency services to ensure safe and secure access and egress routes are provided for all our communities. During Storm Burt, the advice to residents was to not travel by car unless absolutely necessary, to reduce vehicles on the roads to allow emergency services to undertake their work. Abandoned cars that get stuck in floodwater are an additional hazard. I would hope therefore that residents did not set out in any numbers in their cars on that day. People may however have chosen to walk into town. The importance of safe pedestrian routes during emergency events is as important as car access, if not more so, and we have also received feedback from people who pointed out that they walked into town and actually mentioned the importance of keeping the walking routes clear, particularly during flooding. I also have no doubt that emergency vehicles will use whichever roads are available as needed, as is normal practice, where they have suitable vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, is there supplementary?
Thank you Chair, and thank you councillor Mayby for the answer. This is in my ward, and I'm here to represent my residents. You've used one example, one of my residents, Mrs Justine Johnson, who sat watching the proceedings, I don't know what she's making of them, but she had two petitions with over 350 names, Catherine Mayby had one letter. Last week, we were thankful, sorry, I keep my hand on the button.
Councillor Newell, is this moving to a question?
My question will come at the end Chair. Last week, we were lucky in the area that there were no real emergencies due to the flooding. My residents had no legal access. You're now encouraging my residents to break the law. Again, my question is, when will common sense be used and the road turned into a shared route safely, there's plenty of room for cars and pedestrians to remove the path? When will common sense, and when will my residents be spoken to and consulted? Thank you Chair.
I found that a little bit confusing, but I will attempt to answer to that. There have been several examples of near misses in terms of accidents, not just one. There have been several requests for safety. I've pointed out the danger in three ways of cars using this as a shortcut. There is a perfectly legal, well-marked, clear car access via Somerset Road onto Wanster Road. It is now illegal for cars to be driving down that section, the shortcut down Goldwell Lane, and if you encourage them to do so, you will be breaking the law as well. I do believe that some councillors opposite actually stood and protested against this, which would be encouraging people to break the law. I have reached out to the police for help in terms of enforcing this shortcut for the sake of those vulnerable residents who are being frightened and bullied by drivers who have a perfectly adequate alternative access. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you councillor Mayby, thank you councillors. I'm going to take questions 15 and 16 next. So question 15, councillor Keir.
Thank you very much Chair, and I appreciate everyone's patience here because I should have been somewhere three minutes ago. My first question to councillor Catherine Mayby, please could the cabinet member advise of the current details of road sweepers in use in Monmashia, how their use is deployed and managed across the county, and in particular the allocation to Thlambalik and Usk Ward which I represent? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Keir. We have three large mechanical sweepers at present, supported by three small mechanical town centre sweepers. The majority work outside town centres is response reactive, with villages receiving three scheduled sweeps per year, as well as reactive where necessary. Capital funding from the previous administration that included the provision of the third large sweeper is due to end this financial year. The budget challenges faced by the authority will make for difficult decisions on what works are prioritised going forward, but we do recognise the importance of this work, and I will come back to you as soon as we can give you more detail on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This links in a little bit to, with the proactivity that we were talking earlier in the debate about cleaning of streets and leaves and what have you. The officers I've spoken to have asked if you could be kind at Christmas and give them what they want, which is a bigger mini sweeper, seven and a half tonnes, and could I ask that you or the relevant officers could work together to ensure that Usk is given a greater priority? The reason I say that is I understand these sweepers are split in between outside of town and inside of town as you've just highlighted, but I have an example again where the road has been swept with a big sweeper from Tlangibbi through to Trehaba Road four times this year. For what reason? I don't know, but it's something I'd like to investigate, because it seems daft to me that places that are getting flooded are not getting prioritised, and it was what looked like random sweeping to fill time for no reason whatsoever. Thank you.
Thanks, I can't really answer to that sort of detail, but let's talk more, okay, with the relevant officers, thanks.
Thank you, and question 16, also from councillor Keir.
Thank you again Chair. Please could the cabinet member give an update on the road repair schedules and backlog progress and priorities within Monmashia, with particular reference and context to the deteriorating surfaces in my ward on Chepstow Road, Maryport Street and Porthicane Street? Thank you.
Thanks again councillor Keir. With regards to schedules and priorities, the general point, the council prioritise resurfacing based on a number of factors, including road condition, usage, access to services etc, but also the impact of closing roads for resurfacing on the strategic network and route diversion. So I know sometimes it looks like that's a strange decision, but that's because both of those things are going on at the same time. The programme of work is managed within the construction budget challenges, of course. The programme of work for 24 to 25 is on target, but we're needing, we've got some difficult decisions to make for next year. On the particular things in your community, I'm not sure I can answer all of them, but I can tell you a couple of things. So I think you mentioned specifically Porthicane Street. We are, we do need to be clear about and have clear decisions on whether we can fix the chain bridge and when. We don't want to be having that closed at the same time as the works on Porthicane Street, so there's a little bit of juggling there to do before I can answer that. I think you mentioned also, Little Mill's in your ward, isn't it? Am I right in thinking that? Yes, that was one of the things that came up when I was asking about details on your ward. We did start to do, we were planning to do some work on Little Mill this year, but because of the electricity upgrades, we had to, to the glasscoide works, we had to put a stop to that just temporarily, but hoped to come back for it next year. We shifted the money to do the work in Crick quickly because we knew we couldn't continue with electricity upgrades going on, but hopefully we'll be able to come back to Little Mill next year. We'll come back to you with, once we've made the full decisions and once we have the budget sorted. I don't think I can give you any more detail on the other bits now, but obviously there's a lot of detail there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I've been asking for two and a half years since I was elected on these particular streets and the officers, and indeed I understand why you may struggle to give me an answer, but it's a constant question I face. Obviously there were frustrations with regards to seeing two in square resurfaced ahead of these three roads, but we know why that was done, because of the cycling accident that took place. So when might you be in a position to talk about the specifics on those roads so that I can refer that back to my residents when asked, please?
Again, I can't give you a precise date, you know, we are discussing budgets and forward programmes now. I'm always, when I talk to officers about, please can I give a clear answer on all the works for next year, they say, we'd really love to, this is our priority list now, but something might happen next week, and we do have probably about half a million pounds worth of damage to our roads from the recent storms. So again, I'm really cautious about making precise promises that I can't keep, I'm sorry, I do understand how difficult it is, but that is the reality at the moment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So our next question is question three from councillor Emma Bryn. Councillor Bryn.
Can the cabinet member provide an update on what the council is doing to ensure that the Penn Ast via Dech, also known as the Wide Bridge in Red Brook, remains open to users for the foreseeable future, considering the fact that the attached footbridge, built in around 1955, is now well beyond its expected lifespan and is showing severe signs of decay?
Thanks councillor Bryn for the question. The bridge is of great concern to the Wye Valley Walk Management Group, who've been pushing for repairs or replacement. The bridge is monitored by Gloucestershire County Council, and they have commissioned Atkins to produce an options report that they will then use to discuss options for construction and funding with MCC. that they will then use to discuss options for construction and funding with MCC. And this report's due imminently, and they'll contact MCC officers once they're in a position to move forwards. They don't foresee any significant works this year, but officers will update members when we have the report from GCC. And a contribution from Monmouthshire is identified in the capital pressures for 2526. So I'll be in touch as soon as I have more information.
Councillor Bryn.
Thank you very much. It's really good to hear. Obviously, next year marks the 100th anniversary of the Y Valley Walk, and so we'll be likely seeing a surge in visitors as the path is promoted widely. And so my supplementary question was to be asked, kept updated so that the community can be aware of what's going on.
Thank you. Question four is also from councillor Bryn to councillor Mayby.
Following the news that the extensive Y Valley, sorry, back to the Y Valley again, that the extensive wide bridge repairs will now not take place until the spring of 2025. Can the cabinet member please let us know what will be done to ensure the potholed bridge surface will be repaired to last until then?
Thank you, councillor Bryn. It's a long, it's a long old story, isn't it? I'm determined it's going to happen while you and I are still councillors. We will be carrying out maintenance on the bridge to the best of our ability until the bridge surfacing takes place. And I know how awful the potholes are there now and how difficult it is because we keep fixing them and it keeps coming out, and it needs a proper resurface. We are hoping, we're working towards March 2025 for the resurfacing and hoping that we will be able to sign a contract soon so that we can give you absolutely firm dates and so that you can actually share that with residents and businesses in both Wysham and Monmouth. And I promise you, you'll be the first to know as soon as we have that absolutely clear date. Thank you.
Councillor Bryn.
Thank you. Wysham Ward residents rely heavily on the wide bridge in order to access the world beyond, regardless of their mode of travel. Residents have had to face a seriously degraded pavement and road surface on the bridge for many years, with some of the more recent holes being potentially life-threatening to cyclists and motorbike riders. The quick fixes are lasting little time, and soft pat tarmac quickly gets thrust onto pavements, causing issues for pedestrians. I do appreciate the money is tight, but we're seeking assurances that improvements will take place sooner rather than later in order to improve safety. Is this council prepared to run the risk of serious incident taking place on the wide bridge should this not happen? Could you, please give residents peace of mind by providing some kind of timescale of works for the new year?
I'm definitely listening to what you're saying, councillor Bryn, and I do my very best, I promise you. I absolutely recognise the danger and just how bad the condition is. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. And question five is also from councillor Bryn to councillor Birch.
Apologies, my last one. Could we please have an update on the developments of the Wysham to Monmouth Walking and Wheeling Bridge?
Thanks. I think we all want to see the Wysham to Monmouth Walking and Wheeling Bridge in place as a safe and accessible route between Wysham and the town centre. It's an essential part of the active travel network map. But as you know, delivery is dependent on securing external funding. So the next stage in progressing the scheme is to reach agreement over land purchase and the detailed design and early contractor involvement. That work continues to move forward. Will they be in a position to bid for construction funding in the future, utilising grant funding opportunities that present themselves? But the changes for the active travel fund criteria from Welsh Government mean that we're now only able to bid for one strategic project for 2526, and that project must have all permissions in place, including the land acquisition and be construction-ready. So we're in ongoing dialogue with the Welsh Government and Transport for Wales around the funding applications for 2526, 2627, which are focused on the Abigavenny and Llanfoes active travel scheme. And we're looking at using core funding to, for secure existing projects in development can move forward where possible, particularly projects as important as this one. So I'm afraid, again, I can't give you certainty. Bids are being production to go in and conversations are being had with the Welsh Government regarding funding.
Thank you, councillor Bryn.
Thank you. Yes, disappointing to hear that the priority may have slipped down a little. It's understandable that large complicated infrastructure projects like these take time to bear fruit, and we appreciate the hard work that officers are undertaking to ensure that they do. However, I feel a regular progress update on slower-moving schemes such as these would be really helpful so that communities can be assured that they have not been kicked into the long grass, which I'm presuming, even though maybe it's slipped in priority, that we are still driving this project forward. So even if the, even if the updates are nothing to show yet, but we're still working on it, at least residents would know that it isn't off the cards completely.
Thank you. Yes, I can assure you, it's not a lesser priority. It's more a matter of the scheme being ready for submission and therefore ready for funding. And we really want to get to that point as soon as possible.
Thank you, councillors. Question six is from councillor Eason to councillor Birch. Councillor Eason.
Thank you, Chair. Footpath 376, which runs alongside the Netherbrook in Caldergus, has been closed for well over 500 days. There was a recommendation in the Health and Safety Executive that the adjacent recycling yard had caused the risk of the public. Can the cabinet member provide me with a firm update on when this problem be resolved and the footpath will be reopened?
Thanks, councillor Eason. I totally share your frustration over this, but I'm afraid the short answer is no. I can't give you a date. The path will remain closed until it's safe to reopen it. And as you know, it was closed because there was a risk to users, perceived risk to users from the adjoining business. And the responsibility for enforcement regarding that hazard sits with the HSE and with NRW if the business themselves cannot be persuaded to address it. So I'm afraid I can't give you a firm date when the path will be reopened.
Okay, that's not acceptable. Are you aware that at least 17 officers or officers of outside bodies have been involved in correspondence for the last 500 days? And do you accept that really until, I know it's Christmas and we talk about games, that this has been passed the parcel for 500 days? It's been going round and round and round in circles. And all I believe is that there's nobody there to switch the music off. So I would like to see the chief executive, acting chief executive, take some of this in hand to make sure that somebody takes control of his gramophone and shuts his music off. The last email I had from the Health and Safety Executive was on the 20th of October, was, thanks for the email, and it's the same as I had 18 months ago. Thanks for the email. A present HSE is reviewing its position on this, and I am awaiting guidance from my line manager once we are able to consider what evidence and information we have. As a point of fact, HSE has never requested the footpath be closed. Our position is, and always has been, that the risk should be assessed by MCC. If the council felt the risk unacceptable, they should close the footpath. So everything's passing the buck. I find it unacceptable.
Is this leading to a question?
This is a question. Is the cabinet member aware of these concerns? I believe that some action should be taken, and I ask her, that the chief executive, acting chief executive, take this on hand through his officers to drive this forward. The public have now got to the point where they've broken the fence down.
Thank you.
Hang on, no, let me finish. And they put themselves at risk. And if they get hurt, the county council responsible.
Councillor, you've asked your question.
Thank you for helping. You let everybody else talk well, and you shut me down. I don't like it.
Councillor Eason, I am aware of it. I think you and I were speaking about it 18 months ago. And I know that you've been speaking to councillor Sandals in the meantime. I agree, there does seem to be more talk than action on this. And I suggest we pull together a multi-agency meeting and see if we can get some movement and resolution of the situation.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Howells to councillor Chandler. Councillor Howells.
Thank you, Chair. Could the cabinet member provide an update on the support being provided to looked-after children and young care leavers during the Christmas period? Specifically, what initiatives or measures are in place to ensure their wellbeing and inclusion during this time? And how can we, as elected members and members of the public, get involved by contributing gifts or other forms of support to make their Christmas brighter?
Yeah, thank you, councillor Howells, for this very seasonal question and for your concern for our vulnerable children and young adults. As corporate parents, we strive to do the best for the children that we look after and for the young adults who have left our care. Each year, the council hosts the Monmouthshire Christmas Wishes campaign, which provides gifts to vulnerable children, families and care leavers. Local businesses, supermarkets and council hubs have collection points across the county for people to donate gifts for children and families in need. We also have an online portal for those who prefer to donate financially. Donations are used to purchase vouchers for older children and specific gifts for our care leavers. About 350 children and families will benefit from approximately 1,500 parcels, and we're very grateful for all the support we get for the campaign from residents, council staff and local businesses. And I hope our fellow members in this chamber will promote the campaign over the coming days. We also operate the Christmas hamper initiative, which provides over 60 festive food hampers to our county's most vulnerable families in the week before Christmas, and we arrange deliveries courtesy of the volunteers at the Bridges Centre in Monmouth. Our efforts are supported by two Monmouthshire primary schools, King Henry School, local churches and local businesses, including this year Waitrose in Abigavenny, Morgan Sindle, the Caledo Cork Food Bank and Morgan's Vask, Vistery, Edenstone, Tesco's Chepstow and Monmouthshire Building Society, who themselves are now in their seventh year of support for this campaign. We're so grateful for their support and involvement. For children who are looked after in foster placements or with kinship carers, there is money to support Christmas build-in to their foster carers' fees and allowances. And Children's Services also deliver a chocolate selection pack to all our children within a fostering, all children within a fostering family. In addition, the Horse and Coaches in Care Went kindly host a Christmas party and ice skating for Monmouthshire foster families. And foster families themselves, through the support group Foster Carers for Foster Carers, and with the support of the council, organised a Christmas party last Sunday in Monmouth. And councillor Sandals and myself were very happy to attend the party as representatives of the Corporate Parenting Panel and talked to the children and their dedicated foster parents. Those children who are looked after but still placed with their parents, individual social workers work with the parents to ensure that the children have appropriate food, warmth and presence from their parents. And this is supported by Children's Services' Christmas Wishes campaign. And then finally, for children in residential care placements, the care provider is paid to support Christmas, but this is always overseen by the child's social worker to make sure all is working well. With regard to our care leavers, they're supported by Children's Services and the Christmas Wishes campaign and local charities, ensuring that they have a £50 voucher, a £30 food hamper and a handpicked Christmas gift. And this year, we've also had a company called White Tree, who collect new toiletries, treats and other items for our care leavers. There are also two Christmas social events during December for our young care leavers, supported by their personal advisers. They've already had dinner at the Harvester, which was well-attended, and a further outing is scheduled nearer Christmas. And this is a great opportunity for young people to meet up with peers for informal friendships and support. So in conclusion, our dedicated team of staff in Children's Services make every effort to ensure that Christmas is as joyful a time as it can be for our looked-after children and young care leavers. And I hope members will support our Christmas Wishes campaign.
Councillor Howells.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Chandler. I'd like to say diochanwyr to you and the Children's Services team for your update and for the positive work that you're doing. I will be sharing the Monmouthshire Christmas Wishes appeal on social media. Thank you for highlighting it. And I would urge my fellow councillors to do the same, if they haven't already done so, to ensure the best outcome for our looked-after children over the festive season. Can I just ask how we are thanking the residents and businesses for their donation?
Yeah, thank you, councillor Howells. I think the best way to do that is I'm just going to share a very short video that's produced by our Children's Services team.
My name's Amy Lee, and I'm a family support worker within Children's Services. I just want to take a moment to say a huge thank you to everyone who has supported us over the last few Christmases. Thanks to your generosity, I was personally able to deliver some amazing gifts to families who otherwise would have had nothing. I can't tell you how much it meant to them. I had one mum in tears because she couldn't afford a care bay that her child had popped in his Christmas list. Thanks to you, this child and many others had something to open on Christmas morning. But we need your help again this year. Your donations, whether big or small, made and always make such a difference. So for some families, this means the absolute world. Please, can you consider helping bring a little magic to children and vulnerable families in need this Christmas? And I just want to thank you so much for your continued support to Monmouthshire. And we couldn't do it without you. So thank you.
And just to emphasise that if you want to donate to the appeal, you can go to the Monmouthshire Council's website, monmouthshire.gov.uk/christmas-wishes. And I look forward to your donations. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Chandler. Question number eight is from councillor Pavia to councillor Callard.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Could the cabinet member provide a statement on the administration's assumptions regarding the increase in national insurance rate for employers and its impact on the council's budget?
Thank you for the question, councillor Pavia. We've calculated that the impact of the increase in national insurance contributions for direct employees will be around £3.1 million. The funding of the direct national insurance impact is expected to be forthcoming from UK government in the first half of the next financial year. Welsh Government continue to work with the UK government to ensure the full impact of the changes on the public sector are considered and adequate funding is provided. The consideration of the indirect impact of the national insurance changes, which is primarily driven by our commissioned services, is more complex. It's impacted by external factors, including the size of external businesses, their staffing structures, their ability to access any relief schemes and how they may look to absorb any cost increase through their business models. We continue to engage in constructive dialogue with our major providers to better understand any resultant impact, and will make the case for further funding support through the appropriate channels where appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Pavia?
Yes. Can I thank the cabinet member for his response? Given the derisory 2.8% increase in the council's core funding earmarked by the Welsh Government for the next financial year, significantly below the Welsh average of 4.3%, and with no clarity from either the Welsh or UK governments regarding whether local government sector will be shielded from the national insurance increases, as everybody said about potentially hearing next year. And the First Minister and Finance Minister have both said on the record they're hoping to hear by June next year. It's evident that any uplift that we're going to get, however derisory, is going to be swallowed up by this very short-sighted policy. And I think he's absolutely right in terms of what he said about the, our commission partners and providers, including voluntary and community sector organisations that help this council deliver vital public services, be desperately finding ways to absorb the impact of the NI increase from next April, or they may well have to cease their activities. So how does this administration plan to mitigate the financial pressures resulting from the increased national insurance rate for employers? And specifically, what measures will it be taking to ensure that essential services are maintained without compromising the quality of service delivered to our residents? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for the question, councillor Pavia. Your first statement about the uplift in the draft budget of 2.8%, you're right, you know, I'd say we were a little disappointed by it. But you'd be amazed to learn what it was before the election in the summer under the last Conservative government. We were looking at a 0% increase in our funding, and that would have really, really been tough for our services. So although we, you know, we hope for more, we are still in a much better position now than we were in the spring, when we had the last budget statement in the spring from the previous government. We will continue to work with Welsh Government to, you know, help them understand the impacts of the national insurance contributions on our budget. We are expecting funding to be forthcoming. If, you know, as you mentioned, if direct funding is not forthcoming for the indirect national insurance impact, because we do expect it for the direct impact, then that will, that will fall into the increase in our revenue support grant, as you'd expect. I think your question about... I think your question about the impact on services coming up, it's probably best taken into the budget when we take the budget debate coming forward, which I know you'll be thoroughly involved in and I'll look forward to having that discussion with you then. So thank you for the question.
Thank you. Question nine is from councillor John.
Thank you Chair. What discussions has the council had with the Welsh Government and partners about improving road safety on the A40 junction between Raglan and Trigair?
Thank you councillor John. Yeah, I was made aware of this accident hotspot some two years ago, as you'll know, by the Community Council. And I understand it's been concerned for many years. Sorry, can't speak, I'm too tired. Somebody actually opposite, I think councillor Jones said that it had been 20 years or more that it had been a problem.
Twelve years.
Twelve years. We've got a little bit of progress. We have a little bit of progress. Along with the officers, I did persist with Sutra about getting them to take action, as you know, it's a trunk road, to remedy the situation and also writing to the minister about it. I'm happy to be able to report that this does seem to have had an impact. I don't know if that's arrogant of me to think that it had an impact. But we do at last have the road safety study. It was issued this summer, setting out the options. So Welsh Government, I understand, are arranging a meeting in the new year to discuss this with members, community councillors and other key stakeholders. And the County Council, MCC, have offered to host the meeting at the Raglan depot when dates are finalised, invitations will be sent out.
Thank you. Councillor John.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I'm very happy and I'm sure councillor Jones and councillor McKenna as well will, like me, be very keen to join that meeting. As you say, this has been a longstanding issue. We've been waiting a long time for Welsh Government to undertake this road safety study. It has now published this report, making... It's published six possible options. And it cites the sixth option as most likely to be Welsh Government's preferred option because it effectively creates congestion and deters private car use by turning the dual carriageway into a single carriageway. Can I ask what your view is on this option? Because we have, and residents as well, have very real concerns that this option could make those junctions even more dangerous by forcing traffic from the A449, the A40 from Monmouth, the A40 from Abregavenny to be condensed into a single carriageway. So what do you think about that proposal? And what additional can you do to work with us to put pressure on Welsh Government to finally make some progress on this junction? Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I don't fully understand the rationale between the different options. I don't, I think from what I remember, there was a bit more to the argument than the ones that you've picked out. But I honestly don't feel it's my position to take a strong view on the options at this stage. I'd really like to hear what the community think about it. So hopefully this meeting in January, we'll be able to hear all of the arguments for the different options. And I don't think, I did talk to officers about it and they said, well, you know, at this stage, we really need to hear what everyone's got to say. So I'll take your points on board, absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you councillors. Next question is question 10. Councillor McKenna to councillor Mayby. We're working hard today councillor Mayby.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, this question is for councillor Mayby. As the Chair said, you've had quite a few questions this evening. So you'll be pleased to know this is the last one. My question is, the road surface and potholes from the Toll House at Troy to and through Mitchell Troy is particularly poor. Will the cabinet member provide an update on plans to resurface R46, the main road through Mitchell Troy? Thank you.
I'm going to give you one of those annoying guarded answers. I'm so sorry councillor McKenna. The R46 has been identified in the capital pressures list for resurfacing for 2025 to 26. But we're working through the programme for next year right now as it may be impacted by the storm damage from the recent storms. So I can't give you cast iron guarantee at this stage, I'm so sorry. But we'll let you know as soon as we can. Thank you.
Supplementary?
No, no supplementary. Thank you councillor Mayby. You know, I understand the pressures that are on the council, particularly after the storms. But we, councillor Richard John and myself, would greatly appreciate it if you could keep us up to date on the progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Question 11 is from councillor Lucas to councillor Brokelsby.
Thank you. Could the leader or would the leader provide an update on Vauxhall Bridge please? Vauxhall English Bridge.
Thank you councillor Lucas. Before I do provide an update, I would like to acknowledge the sterling work you've done through your petition and with residents in the Obaston Road to raise this issue, along with the sterling work done by other councillors in Monmouth, councillor Mayby, councillor Garrett, and now I suspect councillor Newell will also be on the job and Monmouthshire Town Council, as well as our MP Catherine Fuchs. Because this remains, I think, a sore on the side of the MOD that they have not moved faster in finding a solution to the closure of this bridge. And the more people, including residents, who raise the impact it is having on the area, not just because it stops people from taking a long known and well used shortcut from one side of town to the other, but it is actually a safeguarding issue that has been made very clear to myself and to the MP when we visited the school for parents and children and older children who would have happily used that thoroughfare on their own to get from one side of Monmouth to the other. So I think we are all working together in every way that we can to put pressure on the MOD, to come to a swift conclusion and provide a solution that opens English Bridge as fast as possible. And you will know councillor, that we all have continued to have dialogue with Philip Young, the head of the States Reserve Forces and Cadets Association for Wales. Because we have kept open that dialogue, we are aware of a meeting that is to be held tomorrow, the 13th of December, with the MOD, where officers will, that is MOD officers, will better understand the latest position on replacement or repair. Philip, his chief executive, Dominic Grieve, the Defence Infrastructure Organisation, that is the DIO, and the DIO parliamentary team will be in attendance. I wrote to Philip Young today to remind him that because we are aware of that meeting, I would like, on behalf of the whole council, an update as soon as possible about what options they're considering and what the outcome is of that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope, and I shouldn't, I hope I'm not being wrong here in saying I assume that you will keep me informed likewise as soon as possible, please.
Absolutely councillor Lucas, along with Monmouthshire Town Council, our MP Catherine Fuchs, Catherine Mayby, Martin Newell, Steve Garrett, Angela Sandals, who's the cabinet member for rights of way, and everybody else in Monmouthshire and Monmouthshire Town who is waiting, waiting on the MOT to make a decision.
Thank you. Thank you councillors. Question 12 from councillor Wright to councillor Griffiths.
Thank you Chair. So following the devastating fire in Abregavenny town centre, can the cabinet member please give an update on what the county council is doing to support the local community and businesses in the aftermath?
Sorry, I was with councillor Wright at the Angel Hotel at a meeting convened by the Veni Business Community. And I want to thank the business community and its convener, Lucy Howell, for the spirit and resilience that they have shown in the face of severe challenge. I also want to thank the emergency services and our own staff for all that they have done to respond to the fire and its consequences. The businesses and our staff have worked together to manage the difficult consequences in relation to highway closure, deliveries and waste collection. There is a longer term lens that we need to apply as we and the owner work together to consider the longer term options for this site.
No supplementary question. Thank you. And question 13 is from councillor Wright to councillor Sandals.
Sorry, me again. So there's been a rise in the number of recorded incidents of antisocial behaviour in Abregavenny. So will the cabinet member please tell us what the county council is doing to tackle this problem?
Thank you councillor Wright for a really important question, which many residents will probably be interested in the answer. We are aware of increased demand in Abregavenny, which is driven by youths travelling into the area by train from outside our county. Our community safety team are working very closely with partners, including Gwent Police, British Transport Police and Gwent's community safety teams in Torvine and Blaina, Gwent, to tackle this issue. We are utilising our CCTV function to its fullest and also sharing information and intelligence to prevent, detect and disrupt further occurrences. Our ASB strike process is also being implemented for the youths involved. And this process aims to tackle ASB and prevent further escalation or if necessary, to allow us to apply for an injunction. I hope that helps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Angela. So I know you mentioned that there are youths travelling in from other areas. So from talking to the police, who I just want to say have been amazing, they've done wardwalks with me, they've been really helpful and informative about this. But from talking to them, I believe that these young people are primarily coming in from Torvine. And a lot of the youths are known to Torvine council and are under their own antisocial behaviour processes. So what are we as a council doing to cooperate with Torvine? And is there a process for identifying offenders who are known to other local authorities, which would enable the police to fast track their ASB pathway and more easily tackle known offenders who are targeting Abregavenny?
Okay, thank you for that. Basically, through our community safety partnerships, officers, our officers, are liaising with partners, including, as I said, Gwent Police, the CCTV control room, which is really vital, and youth services on a weekly basis, where updates and information are shared regarding this matter. Our ASB strike process, which is in line with and mirrors the wider all Gwent ASB policy used in Torvine, is also being utilised for the youths involved. So that obviously brings it all together. The aim of this ASB strike process is to tackle antisocial behaviour through intervention, which will prevent further incidents from occurring and if necessary, to escalate this process through its required four stages before this allows an injunction to be considered. Officers continue to monitor the situation to reduce antisocial behaviour in Abregavenny with all our partners and communities using all the legislation and guidance that's available to us. They're also exploring the use of home office funding to provide additional resources in the area. So it's ongoing work. I hope that helps. Thank you.
Lovely, thank you.
Thank you. And last up, question 14 councillor John to councillor Griffiths.
Thank you Chair. What steps is the administration taking to support high street businesses?
Thank you councillor John. Our key strategy in supporting our high streets is to work through the Transforming Towns framework established by Welsh Government. We work with town councils, town businesses and communities to develop a shared vision for our towns, identifying changes that we can support, or which we can employ to support that visage. By agreeing that vision and the place making plan, we gain access to funding opportunities to support town centres and their business premises.
Thank you for that answer. Earlier this week, I was really disappointed to see the closure of Cordell's in Monmouth. The store posted on their Facebook page, "We have put our heart and soul into trying to navigate our cherished business through the last four testing years. However, this year is a step too far." And they clearly blamed Welsh Water and Monmouthshire County Council and go on to say, "Your incompetence and leadership has once again ruined another business. Shame on you." There are clearly businesses who don't feel that they are getting the support that they require from Monmouthshire County Council. We know that the administration has got rid of free parking, free bus travel at Christmas. We've seen enormous burdens on businesses, particularly in Monmouth, while the Welsh Water works have been going on. I understand the Business Resilience Forum is not meeting as much as it used to do. So this is a really tough time for high street businesses and they clearly don't feel that the council's on their side. So whatever you think you're doing as an administration to support businesses, it's not enough. So can I please ask that you redouble your efforts, improve relations with town centre businesses and representative groups? Because there are businesses who are really close to the edge and this is a really difficult time when we should be supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you councillor John. And I'm sorry to hear of the messages you've received from Cordell's. It concerns all of us deeply when any business ceases to trade in our high streets. The actual vacancy in Monmouth, vacancy rate in Monmouth, has diminished over the last six months, notwithstanding all the difficulties occasioned by the very important investment that took place in the town through Welsh Water. I think many of us regret the criticism. Perhaps it's inevitable, but the criticism made of Welsh Water and the way it's managed that operation. I've watched it closely. I've listened closely to their staff, to their management. I recall hearing David Davis, when he was MP, explaining patiently to public meetings in Monmouth that as far as he was concerned, Welsh Water were managing this process, difficult process, as well as it could be managed. And I was able to agree with our MP at that time. A difficult process, but one which I believe has been well managed. I look forward to us moving beyond that. I will always be redoubling efforts and I will continue to make all the relationships that I can with businesses in each of our towns throughout the county.
Thank you councillors. Thank you everybody. That brings us to the end of our very long meeting. So I'd like to thank you all fair hoots. I'd like to also thank all staff who have stayed, both in the chamber and behind the scenes. And can I wish you and everyone online a very happy Christmas? Thank you.